Evening. Welcome to the Goffstown Board of Selectmen Meeting, June 27, 2011. And please all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Dave, would you lead us?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. First order of business is the acceptance and/or correction of public and non-public minutes of 6:20, 2011.
Motion to accept those minutes.
Second, any discussion? Seeing no discussion, and the motion and the second is for both sets, I'm assuming. All those in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. Next item is announcements. We do have a few announcements, and Dave, you have one from the Sioux?
Yes. This was email that was sent out to businesses and interested residents last Friday night. At the end of last week, six of eight side street connections were completed going on to the main sewer line. This week, they will complete the last two side street connections. So, given our good weather today and tomorrow, I would expect that to probably be done. And then remainder of this week will be testing of the integrity of pipe and manhole connections, paving the trenches that have been dug up in the last two weeks, and miscellaneous cleanup work. And that will complete the work for this early part of the summer, and then the company will be back later this fall to pave the entire road.
Any questions, Dave? Seeing none.
Actually, I did have a quick question. Just so I have an understanding, they've done a great job. Traffic's been flowing very good. You say they're coming back later in the fall. Is there a reason there's a gap between the paving and coming back in the fall?
We would normally wait an entire year for finished coating of asphalt. But wanting to complete this project, we're waiting 90 days, assuming that the heavy traffic will help consolidate the trenches, fill in the trenches.
Okay. Any other questions, Dave? All right. Sue, you have a Senior Hero Award?
Yes. Kathy Ball was awarded this by the Manchester Region Area Committee on Aging. The certificate is awarded to Kathy Ball in recognition of your above and beyond services to the senior population. We thank you for making a difference in the lives of seniors by your acts of kindness. And she has. She really does accommodate them in their special circumstances, whether it's to register a vote, motor vehicles, whatever.
Okay, good. Very good. We also received a second letter from the Belange family. We had one last week, which was to Chief Patrick Sullivan, and they sent another one to Chief Richard O'Brien. Dear Chief O'Brien, I would like to take a moment to write and say thank you to your ambulance and engine company that responded to my residence on June 6, 2011, at approximately 21:15 hours. I had the unfortunate task of arriving home to find my 71-year-old mother on the floor, bleeding from her arms and head. I immediately made a call to the dispatch center, and within minutes, they arrived at my home and cared for my mother. I would like to especially thank Ben Bruley, who provided care while on the way to the hospital. After we had arrived at the hospital and your EMTs left, my mom told me how nice he was and that he made her feel comfortable and took the anxiety away from her, even though she did not want to go to the hospital. My mom is very stubborn and have no idea what Ben said to make her feel comfortable. I would ask that you extend my family's gratefulness for your quick and professional response by the Goffstown Fire and EMS personnel who responded that evening to assist my mom. As Chief of the Fire Department, you should be proud of the employees who were on this call. Respectfully, the Belange family. And I have to say, it was a good job that Ben did. Thank you, Chief, and for everybody in the department. With that, do we have any other announcements? Scott?
Yeah, I just wanted to publicly acknowledge a few folks. For some of you who attended the 250th Gala Ball on Saturday, I thought it was a really great event. And I just wanted to thank our volunteers in the 250th Committee. I also wanted to thank the Goffstown Main Street Program, because a lot of their folks who work on that program also helped us as well. And wanted to thank St. Anson College. They've been, they were very helpful throughout the whole process, especially their campus security. And I talked to Don Davidson today. We had to go in and out of there numerous times and at different hours, and they were so accommodating and so professional and nice. I was just, they were just fantastic. And last but not least, we had a lot of, I'm not going to name off all the sponsors. That was done at the event. But I want to acknowledge one in particular. That's Tom Sousa from Sousa Signs. Tom, on his own, he put together these two displays, collage-type displays, and we're going to feature them at the block party. And we'll also, probably they'll be here at Town Hall or at the Grassmere Town Hall. They'll be somewhere for, you know, permanently. But he took a, made a photo collage and just did a fantastic job. He's also done all of our signs for nothing. So, we wouldn't be able to do a lot of what we've done without him and all his help. So, I just wanted to thank Tom for that.
Okay, great. Anything else? Any other?
I don't know. Maybe Mr. Pierce would like to address Henry Bridge Road as far as tomorrow.
I don't have the announcement with me, but-
But we'll be closed tomorrow for paving.
Commencing the second day-
I'm going to get my bike down there. You're going to have to walk it down, Scott.
There's paving on Henry Bridge Road, and there'll be signs up, probably directing the traffic to avoid that connection.
No, I was saying, I was saying because the-
Between Center Street and Mast.
Yeah, because the signs were there for alternative routes, so, just so people know. And that's, a lot of people use Henry Bridge Road.
But, so, just so everybody knows, I guess the point that's trying to be made is that there's scheduled paving tomorrow on Henry Bridge Road. And if you cross that way normally, try to go a different way tomorrow so you can avoid it. And hopefully it'll be completed for the following day. Anything else? Okay. Public comment. At this time, we take a comment from members of the public who are not on the agenda later this evening. If there's any members of the public here who would like to make a comment, you're more than welcome. Yes, we're going to need your name for the record.
David McCackern, Scottish.
Dave, could you come up to the table, please?
Oh, I'm sorry. Dave McCackern, Scottish, and I'm relatively new in town, and I'm involved in a number of projects. And one is the parcel of land that I have on Tenny Road in Goffstown. It's 100-something acres. And I am developing it for public recreation and primarily for trails. I've created about five miles of trails at this point, and I am very desirous of it being accessed for perpetuity. And I have been with, involved with conservation groups, Society for the Protection of the Hampshire Forest, the Nature Conservancy, and our local PLC. And I've obviously have spent time with the Conservation Committee. I have a three-year game plan. I turn 70 in 2015, and these things take time. So, I wanted to get it started. I plan on having an open house in the fall and inviting people to engage. It consists of, in addition to the trails, a lovely hill with just spectacular views. If you go to my website, silverhills.com, there are photographs of the place. So, I would encourage you to come visit. At this point, there's a Trailhead sign, compliments of Ray Taber, who's made everything happen, from my point of view, and Bob. And I'm very, very much desirous of doing it. I just had a birthday, and we're all in the same boat, in which we all have terminal illnesses. And mine isn't going to happen until I'm 103, but I want to, I want to get this done before, before I go too far. The second thing I'm involved with is the Main Street Program, and we have worked with Robbie. And I am trying to get Main Street to be more walkable and more user-friendly. I have a four-step plan, and step one was very, very simple things, in terms of what can be done with very little money. And we've got that almost completed. It consists of talking to home, business owners, like Sully's, in which we're going to paint one and/or two and/or four, depending on what business it is, parking, which is with a special color, and simply welcome to Goffstown. So, people will feel they have a, they have a place that they can park for the day and whatever. The second thing we've done is to make sure that people have their flags out when they're open, and more importantly, not out when they're closed. And I've gotten through to most business people at that point. The third thing that we're desirous of doing is sidewalks. I find it offensive that, as a Goffstown walker, that there are only two places you can cross from one side of the street to the other. And I would like to counter what was done a number of years ago, which was to eliminate some crosswalks. I'd like to get those back in place. That is the first step. The second step, I don't need to spend time with at this point. But my goal is, you would come to town and bike, or you would come to town and hike, or you would come to town and use the river for various recreational areas. Incredible access beside Larry's, the Goffstown Hardware. There's just a ton of things to do in this town, in addition to this town. And I want to encourage people to become more aware of that. So, that's, that's my other goal. And I should say, as a sidebar, there's a slight twist in what I'm saying. I don't know how to introduce this in public, but there is a river running through our town, and I think we can gladly say that. But more importantly, there's a trench which runs under it. And I have, I have great dreams for this trench, because you can walk from the church, School Street Park, and Church Street Park, and you can come out in some, not too pleasant area to come out in, sort of a neglected part behind Larry's. Been through it many times, and I envision experiences that I had with as a kid, and my kids have had experiences with, wherever we've traveled, from Santa Fe to Portsmouth to St. Augustine, to you name it, and that is these night walks, in which people are in costume, and you guys are really good at that, in which we, we lead. I saw you in front page of a paper. I get the New York Times and the Goffstown News. I don't know which one it was, but anyways. The thing that I'm intrigued with is that we have a treasure, a real treasure. If you go in there, incredible granite work, incredible construction. And it's a real treat to, to sort of explore with, I'm thinking of a group of young people, a group of teenagers, and just go in and tell stories by the fireside, if you will, without the fire. And so, I've been, if you've seen me, I make a point of parking my car. Every Saturday night, I do a tour. We listen to Prairie Home Companion, and it's been pretty exciting. And I drop stuff so that people can find it. You know, like, this is what I found when I walked the trench. And I can tell you, I'm sure there's all kinds of legal ramifications for the town, so I'm a little hesitant to talk about what I'm up to, but for this time, forget I came.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dave.
I don't see any other members of the public here, unless we have one or two not seeing them. We'll move on. We have a 6:30 appointment with Fire Chief Richard O'Brien. And you're welcome to come up. I don't know if you're expecting anybody else, but-
Good evening.
Good evening, Chief.
This evening, I come before you once again to talk about the updated job descriptions for several positions within the Fire Department. And hopefully, we've got, you've got them now, now in hand and had the opportunity to review them. The whole point to, to update these position descriptions or job descriptions is to update the job summary and the nature of work and the essential, the essential duties and responsibilities, education and training, and any certifications, and the physical conditions of the job, to be more aligned of what the position is today and what the position deserves, to give, give the position the respect it deserves. So, with that said, I'll be happy to continue the discussion on, discussion on it, if you have any questions.
I do, Chief. On call firefighter, and also, I believe it's in firefighter. When you get to line seven, there's a word in there that I think should be changed. Words indoctrinate. Do you want educate? Well, I don't want to put words in a chief's mouth, since he's the one that's working on the job descriptions. I think it's probably best to let him decide a better word.
Indoctrinates, meaning that it's to be more or less be made aware of any of the public or, or fire safety, emergency preparedness issues that we have. So, term like that could go hand in hand with the term like educates the public, or introduces the public on issues. So, whatever makes you more comfortable with that.
Want to make sure that you're expressing what you're trying to express. I didn't want to suggest-
That's my intent. That was my intent.
Okay. What about just using public awareness, education and public awareness? Would that suffice?
We can use the term educates.
I just, on all of them, again, I, I don't perform your job, so I don't know some of the ins and outs in terms of essential duties and responsibilities. I have to trust, you know, what you're saying. But the one thing that I would, I would hope maybe we can agree on is the last, you know, the last thing of all these, where you put in like ADA language. So, it's, the job description should not be interpreted as all, as all-inclusive, is intended to identify the essential functions and requirements of this job. Incumbents may be requested to perform job-related responsibilities and tasks other than those stated in this specification. So, that covers that. Any essential function or requirement of this job will be evaluated as necessary should an incumbent applicant be unable to perform the function. Okay? Define as ADA. And I think, personally, I think this is where our board needs to really, is there anything else that, and I think you've outlined the fact that it is not, it's not all-inclusive. It's implied to me that they're subject to change. And I think you've addressed some of the other things that we, we chatted about. I think we were, I got, I was under the impression when we spoke at this last, that we wanted to make it not a huge hurdle for some of our call firefighters, you know, recognize that there's going to be some time where they're getting some of these qualifications.
Yeah, it's important to realize-
I don't have, personally, I don't have the expertise to know what a, what a Fire Department Lieutenant does. That's, I have to trust you, you know, on that.
Right. Again, it, it's not, it's, I don't wish you to look at this as if it's a restrictive job description on any level. It's more reflective on respecting the jobs that our firefighters and members do now, and giving credit where credit's due on, on the performance that they do day-to-day now, versus the ones previously really didn't match up with what they do. So, but then, then again, it's, given the, for example, the, the job description for call firefighter, it had to be broad enough where it included the entry-level member, it included the 29-year-old, 29-year veteran of the department that's a call firefighter, and, because they both sit on the same position.
Any other questions, Chief?
We have a couple. Nick?
Chief, just a couple of questions. On your call firefighters, full-time firefighters, call lieutenants and full-time lieutenants, you have them reporting to the, well, firefighters to lieutenants, your lieutenants to deputy chief.
Correct.
And in your EMS member, you have them reporting to a captain or a lieutenant.
Right. The, currently, the, the EMS members, the majority of them work the nighttime EMS position, and the captain, Captain Tower, is their supervisor that coordinates their shifts and who works where. So, typically, if they have issues with their shift, they go to him. But then again, if there's a, if there's a call EMS member that is not working that shift, but is on a regular call, is called back in, they could still report to that, that supervisor, that lieutenant level, in the absence of the captain.
But I, what I take it here is that your lieutenants don't report to a captain. They report to the deputy chief?
Typically, they don't, yes. Of course, if there's a, if we have an incident where the captain is there, his rank does have respect, and they will, they will honor that. Again, that's something, that's another job description we have to clarify down the road.
Well, that was, leads me to my next question I was going to ask. There's, I don't see a job description for the captain.
That'll be coming.
As well as the deputy chief?
Deputy chief and even my position.
One last question.
On the, the officer's position, you have them assuming incident command at emergency incidents and requiring them ICS 100, 200, and 700.
Correct.
That's not in the firefighter's positions?
Again, it's-
It probably should be, as a, an entry level-
I agree. It's one of those items that, that they do get that training, in their first year training, we do get them to 100, 200, and 700, because they're all online programs, and we can, we can have them do that. We can, we can put that under-
Probably should be in their job description.
Do you have questions, Chief?
Just one last question, if I could. Chief, is there any way on the, the call lieutenant, I understand on the full-time lieutenant, they have, within one year, they have to receive their Fire Officer 1 and 2 certification or equivalent. And if you, you look at the listing, communications, total quality management, incident command, strategy and tactics, critical thinking, cultural diversity, public relations, budgeting, conflict resolution, accountability, safety and wellness, functional leadership, strategic planning. Is there any way that on the call side, that the call lieutenant would need to be enrolled in a program versus having it completed? That, for a part-time individual, that may be much for someone, you know, your full-time lieutenant can take a full week, you know, go to the fire academy, or two weeks, or, whereas on a, on the call side, that may be a lot of coursework for someone to complete in one year's time.
Right. It's, it's something that also, that if they haven't had their Fire Officer 1 or 2, and, but they've had, for example, I have one person in mind that, that's on our call department. He works professionally in an office, but he's a supervisor in that office. So, he's taken safety and wellness programs, functional leadership programs, even before, you know, being eligible for this position. And that's something we'll take into account, regardless of when you get it. Not necessarily from a year of their, of their promotion, but if they have this prior to that, that counts for this. Because the equivalency for Fire Officer 1 and 2 program is about 100 to 120 hours of, of educational component. And it doesn't, there's no timeline on that, you know, as far as dated prior to promotion. So, for example, if, if you, you were promoted, but prior to a promotion, you had taken some coursework or some programs in total quality management, cultural diversity, and public relations, we would honor that. And then, so you wouldn't need to take more of that necessarily, you know, after, after the year span between promotion and that one-year span. So, we're giving you credit for that.
Right. But my question is, for those individuals, you know, in that time that they're a firefighter and they're looking to get promoted, they've gotten their EMT program done, which is a good 100-plus hours, their CDL, they've gotten their hazmat ops, they've gotten all their ICS, they're now promoted. Is there a way that, once they start this, this is an individual that doesn't have that background?
Yep.
That they don't have that one-year constraint, that at least they're actively pursuing it, they're in classes, and they're working towards that equivalency?
I could, I could see that, and it's something that if, if we do that, we could almost include it into the full-time lieutenant also. Because I think it's important, not only do you get it within the one year, but you constantly get it. Once, once you get promoted, you shouldn't go stale. It's a matter of just keep taking classes so you're up on the current trends, on all these components that I'm listing here. So, I wouldn't, I wouldn't be objective to, to listing as an ongoing effort to make sure you're taking coursework on a particular item.
So, Nick, what are you proposing? Any changes in the actual wording, though?
Well, the wording would just be enrolled in and actively pursuing Fire Officer 1 or 2 certification or equivalent coursework to meet these topics as you list. I think they're very good topics. They meet, they come right out of those officer certification programs.
Yeah. That's where I hit a phone. I can do that. I'll make that shift.
Sue?
Chief, I understand that our current fire prevention officer is at the rank of lieutenant. Do you see that as a forever thing?
Coming into negotiations, it may or may not. But right now, it's, that's lieutenant level. Some departments, Bedford for one, it's a lieutenant position, and then some like Derry, I think it's up to captain. So, it's been used as a promotional tool and/or a tool to entice personnel to, to go into that office.
So, if someone fills in when the fire prevention officer is on vacation, they would be paid at the rank of lieutenant, even though they weren't a lieutenant?
Yes. I believe it's in the, in the contract, and I think if they're filling in, they do, they do get stipend.
Okay. But I guess the question then that I have, are we doing the job description to the contract, or are we leaving the job description to be determined? As far as that's concerned?
As far as that particular position, it's not defined specifically in the contract. It is a recognized position within the contract.
Just a schedule.
Just a schedule. It doesn't, it doesn't define rank within the contract.
Okay. Okay. Any other questions? Do you have questions?
No, this is more, more of a comment. I just want to, I just want it on the record that by virtue of reviewing these job descriptions, by no means does this have any bearing positively or negatively on our contract negotiations. It's, it's a standalone thing, and it should not be perceived or construed by anybody that has any correlation. It's just something that we have to do, and we just so happen to be in a contract here. So, it is what it is. But there's, that they're unrelated to each other.
Okay. But I guess what's important, that it's not just an individual statement that appears in the minutes. I think that it's consensus of the board, if I'm correct, that, that's, that's an accurate reflection, that that statement's accurate. I mean, if there's anybody here that doesn't agree that that's an accurate statement, it would be easier to say no. But if it's an accurate statement, then let the minutes reflect that. It's consensus of the board that that's an accurate statement.
Can we hear the statement again?
Okay.
Basically, what, what I mentioned was-
Oh, your statement, okay.
My statement that these are standalone-
Right.
Understood. I agree.
Okay. Okay. Good. Any other discussion on these with the chief? What is it you're looking for us?
What I'll do is I'll make those changes, and then you see on the form, I just, I have the validation processes, having a signature from the board. So, in that particular case, I would ask you to sign it if you're all good with it.
Okay.
And, but I'll get you a fresh copy, so you can do that at some point.
Okay. Good. Anything else, Chief, while you have?
That's it. That's it. I'll stick around if you need any.
Well, thank you. You know, these are, this is a lot of work, you know.
Yeah.
But I mean, I think clearly, those of us who, you know, are in management, you know, this is a ton of work. So, appreciate all the hard work.
So, we're doing phase one and phase two. Phase one was the, the non-supervisory per se, and then now we're going to go into the supervisory and even evaluate my own position.
Yeah. Especially in a form, because they weren't even in this format before.
Right. Exactly. Thank you very much.
And also, Sue, you emailed us today with the contract for the truck as, in a sample performance bond.
Yes, the pumper tanker.
You want to talk about that now? I emailed a, to Sue was, the Pierce is ready for signature on a contract for the new pumper tanker. And what I did is I emailed it to Sue and Nick to distribute. And if there's any discussion, if you're okay with it, you can sign it. The process then is, we would send it to Pierce, and then Pierce would take it through their process, sign it on their end, and start a performance bond. And also in the email, I mailed you a sample performance bond. You can see the language that they, they provide by their, their company that does- that they, they provide by their, their company that does that for them. And once the contract is back, an invoice will probably chase it or follow it, and if the contract is all good with us, we go ahead and make that first payment. And then we're off to the races.
Great. Thank you.
Most of you probably haven't seen it, because it was emailed to you later in the day, so you probably didn't see it.
It was later. Yeah, I caught a typo on one of the first one, first version, so.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Quick question for Sue.
Yeah.
Is that performance bond, is that something that we need to have reviewed?
Typically, if it doesn't meet the standard of performance bond language that Attorney Drescher has drafted, we have him review it, just to make sure.
That's why I had him bring up samples, so you could take a look at that.
Yeah, okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Okay. We're running a little early.
That's a good thing.
We can meet with the Public Works Director, who's here, regarding acceptance of plans for road improvements and trouble spots on East Dunbarton Road. Thank you, Carl.
Good evening. Last week, we conducted public information meetings with residents on all of the major project roads. So the plans, we left them for you this weekend, if you were interested in taking a look at them. As typical in our old reclamation, or reclamation projects of our old roads, we can't quite meet today's current town standards. So the board needs to approve the plans, that, you know, we've done our best, but things like grade, you know, maximum grades and curvature, and, you know, standards like that, we're just not able to meet with, with a reclamation job. So all I need from the board is, well, first of all, if you have any questions on them, I'd be happy to answer them. The ones that are gonna go out to bid, Spring Street and Lesnick, we're still developing the bid package and the specifications, so you'll actually see that one more time when we come in and ask for permission to put it out to bid. But as far as the plans themselves, if the board is comfortable, I would like to get the motion that we're gonna build them as per plan, just to cover that liability.
Just a quick question. Carl, a while ago, we had talked about, one of the things that we usually can't meet is the depth of gravel.
Right.
Is that something we can now do, having the available, availability of gravel from the new land purchase?
Well, I, I'm not sure that we would want, I mean, the answer is yes. I don't know how the board feels, but I'm not unhappy with the product we get with the reclamation process. By bringing gravel, you know, that extra gravel in, I'm not sure we're gonna gain that much. It's possible we could do it, but I'm just not sure we'd add that much life, because I don't think, I'm guessing by your question, your intention is just adding to the, not stopping reclamation, but to add gravel to it?
Right. My understanding was that we weren't getting that full drainage level that we put in our regulations because of the expense of, of gravel and-
And it would, it would still be a very, even though we own the resource, it would be a very expensive proposition to remove all of the asphalt and reclaim material and then bring-
Then bring gravel.
Gravels back in. You know, reclamation is as much about recycling the material that's there as it is about, you know, creating a new road. It's, it's really a, it minimizes your effort, it creates a-
So we don't put any gravel?
Sometimes we put, depending on the product we end up with, sometimes we put a few inches of crush gravel, just to make it easier to grade and minimize how much asphalt we have to put down on the base course. And we, we still continue that practice with these projects. And if we start crushing our own material, obviously, that's where that would come from, is, is our own stuff. But to dig it out and put a foot of bank run, and then six inches of crush, I'm just not sure that it would still be cost-effective.
All right. Okay. Steve?
On Lesnick, I mean, is that a road that you have drainage problems with?
Oh, yeah.
Because I saw all the holes and-
All when you were running?
Yeah, I got a-
You got a good look at it.
And at my speed, I got a lot of look at it. But I saw all the holes, and I mean, you looked at it, it was just filled with water, and you could see what, what-
Yeah.
So when he, when, when Nick talks about the reclamation part, that you grind it up, how does that, I mean, what are you doing with the drainage on that one?
What we, what we do on all, you know, Goffstown, I always refer to it, it's like a big funnel. You know, we have mountains on all sides, and everything drains to the lake in the middle. And Lesnick is a classic example of a mountainside road that we have to deal with. So what we typically do with that is, on the uphill side of the road, we'll put an under drainage system in to catch that groundwater, and keep it from getting into the road base, and it's been very effective for us.
So on Lesnick, is this gonna be different from the gully that we normally see there, or?
If we have room to get a good, a good ditch line, we'll put a ditch line, but if you look at Lesnick, the section we're doing, the stone walls are right there, so I think a lot of that is being up with under drainage and closed pipe, just because the right-of-way is pretty tight to the road.
How deep down is the pipe system?
Typically, we try to go down below Frost, so it's like 42 inches, four, four feet, unless there's ledge.
Then that water is eventually conveyed to the other side of the downhill side of the road.
Yeah.
Scott, do you have a question?
No, I'm good.
Okay. Any other questions, Carl?
I'll make a motion that we accept the plans from DPW as presented for both, was it, for both Spring and Lesnick? Is that what it was?
Lesnick, Spring, and, and the most important one is Addison.
And Addison, okay.
We're hoping to start that next week, if weather holds.
And Addison.
Okay. Do you have a second?
Yes, second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
It's unanimous.
Just for the board's information, we had very, pretty good turnout at all the hearings.
All three.
People really had some good discussions. And you wanted to talk about East Dunbarton, I believe. I think, you know, I've, I've followed the discussions at the board meetings, and I think I told Phil this on the phone, but certainly, if we can't get, right now, everything's looking good. All the projects that we have done have come in, so we're a little bit ahead on the, on the budget. These are obviously the big, the big tickets, so until we put them out to bid and get the bids back, I'm, I'm not gonna be overly comfortable. But at the very least, I think we could get up there and do, the areas that people are really complaining about are two cross culverts.
Right.
That the pipes are rotted, the trenches have settled. I think at the very least, we could get a crew up there to change those crossover pipes. So if we can't get to the whole road, we can at least take care of those two really bad spots that are giving people, well, people and us, so much problem. So at a minimum, I think we can safely commit to that at this point.
Scott?
Mine, this is a general comment, and I, again, I've, I've explained it probably about five or six times in the last week, since we've repaved, did a top coat on Goffstown Back Road, is, I think, I know, I know I said this for the last few years, but maybe it's like every year, every two years, to write a letter to the paper, and just say, hey, here's why we do this, you know? And I was talking to Steve about it today, and it's something that, you know, I think people get a bit like, why, you know, here it is, we got East Dunbarton Road, or you can't fix this pothole, or this road is horrible, but you're redoing another lane, like, well, I'm trying to explain, well, if that costs, you know, whatever, it's 20 cents on the dollar, if we do a total reclaim, it's, it's a lot more expensive, and you have to do it for maintenance, it's a maintenance overlay.
Yep.
Yeah.
And I think a lot of folks don't understand that, you know?
I understand what you're saying, and I've had a discussion with both the two gentlemen that were here from East Dunbarton Road, because that question obviously-
Comes up all the time.
Yeah, but, I mean, they, they understand the fact that when a road gets to the, a point, and I think part of what Department of Public Works uses for the gauging, is how much, when it comes to the crack ceiling, how much crack ceiling is used on a road? You get to the point where you can only put so much crack ceiling on it, and if you don't reclaim it at that point, you're gonna lose that road, and it'll be bad, and it, but, and some people, and the two gentlemen do understand that.
I, again, this is just, you know, to save ourselves headache, not to, I think it's a little bit of a pain in the neck to every year, and my suggestion would be, maybe post some, you know, a Q and A on this.
Yeah.
And we have the resources here, you can even do like a quick five-minute PSA, you know, it's, it's just a little, a video, have somebody from DPW show them, you know, here's, you know, here's what the deal is, and then just, and we can, I can refer someone, hey, check out the website, we have a really good document that explains why we do it, we use, you know, you know, we, we look at the roads every year, we determine what, you know, how they're doing, and then it goes into a computer, and we, and that's how we handle it. If a road isn't, if a road is done, if it's dead, it doesn't matter, it's not gonna get worse per se, so we have to make sure that we keep the roads that are at a certain PCI, whatever it is, and I think people will, that would be very helpful, I think.
Yeah.
So we can keep referring people there.
Let me commit to doing that, and I, I'll have to double-check, but I, last I knew, we had a little video. It was not done by us.
I was asking if we-
It's not on, but I did see that you showed that-
Yeah, there was a-
One of the-
It kinda did the life cycle of a road, and it really explained it.
Yeah, it was very well done.
And I guess, what I'm, I think our newer, our new website has, it's, I like it a lot, I think that if we embrace this technology a little bit more, where we have, you know, public service announcements that are on there, that, you know, like I said, a quick two or three-minute video, and/or this way people can watch it, or they can click on it and read it.
Yep.
And we can refer people, I think it'll save everybody a lot of aggravation in the long run.
Let me just add to that, rather than just keeping it to the website, because not everybody-
GTV.
GTV.
But once it's produced, you can-
I think it was on GTV, I think you had it on there for a while.
Yeah.
Kudos for having all your reclamation projects online, with explanations about them.
Well, and I, and I'll, at the very least, we'll hunt down that old video and-
That was well done.
Get it back up there, because that was a nice little thing, and then we'll, we've been talking and talking, and we just gotta make it a priority, get to a little newsletter and little, some articles done, and I have a meeting in the morning, and we'll bring it up again.
I, I have to relay this, potholes. A gentleman approached me today about Rochambeau Street and others, so I, I'm sure that we've got pothole crews out, but-
Oh, yeah.
The roads are what the roads are, so.
The public needs to know, they need to get on the work list, though, they need to call the Public Works Department, get on the list, and have it filled.
Yeah. Yeah, Rochambeau, I, I don't know for sure, but I still, up until very recently, we've still been avoiding that area, just because of the sewer construction, and so I know we've, we've really, so I know Penadville needs a lot of help, you know, Warren Ave, and several of those streets back there really need some attention, and I know the reason is, we just haven't wanted to put more confusion into that master road area.
Carl, are we getting any variation in the price of asphalt as the price of oil changes?
It, it has gone up, the last invoice was a couple bucks higher than we'd been paying. However, with the recent announcement that oil prices are kinda going back down, I would expect that we'll see a favorable swing.
Yeah, they close at $90 a barrel today.
Yeah, yeah. So it's, it, just to put it into perspective, the highest bill we've paid is, is what we budgeted, so the spreadsheet you all saw when you approved the road plan was based on $70 a ton.
Right.
At the beginning of the season, we were paying about 64, and it crept its way up to 70. Now, I expect it'll start to go down, so that accounts for why we're a little ahead of the, the bottom line.
Okay. Okay. Will you be able to contact the two gentlemen that we're in and let them know-
Yeah.
About this?
Yeah. We tried to get one of those gentlemen to change one of those pipes at one point, couldn't do it for us.
You mean he has construction equipment?
Oh, yes, he was doing, doing a job right there.
Wanted to make it clear to the other viewing public, yeah.
Well, it might have been an issue with his insurance, too, I don't know.
Yeah, I don't know either, but I'll be glad to contact.
Okay, but if you could, if you could contact them, so just let them know-
Just fill out a volunteer form for a donation down, the board would gladly review it.
Yeah.
Up to $5,000.
Okay.
Yep.
Any other questions, Carl, regarding these issues? Because Carl is here for the public hearing, but we can't start that until 7:00, because that's when it was announced.
I did just, if, on that policy, just in case somebody from the public shows up, I saw one typo. And I don't know if any of you picked up on it, in the table in the, we, we went back and forth, the restriction, what we're recommending is a 50% load restriction, and in one place in the text, it refers to a 45% reduction.
I think that should come up, though, during the public hearing.
Okay. Well, I just wanted to point it out to you that the correct number is 50%, and the table in the back, it references 50%.
No, but I'm assuming you're, you're presenting this.
Sure.
Yeah, okay, so if you could just, well, you're the one that's knowledgeable about this.
Yes.
I don't think, if there's anybody here who wants to volunteer to do it, I'm, I'm glad we can let them do it, I think they would rather that you do it.
That's fine.
But if you could just let that, that be, be known, and that way, as we go through, through that, that carries through that there, that that, that was brought out in the public hearing.
Is that at the beginning of the second page?
Yes. Yeah, right at the top.
And that should be 50%?
Yeah. It said 50, and I got crossed off and turned into 45, but it should be 50.
Okay. Is that the only place it appears like that?
Yeah, it's the only place that's incorrect.
Copy here, by the way, if you need one.
Yeah. It's the only place that's incorrect.
Okay.
Everywhere else it's 50.
Did you get any people contacting you regarding it?
No.
I had a few people contacting me, and they were concerned that it was gonna be more restrictive, when I explained to them how it was designed by the contact, tire contact, the road being distributed by the contact of the tires, they pulled it up.
Less restrictive.
Is that it? Yeah. I didn't wanna go make, you know, I explained it to them, and then they felt comfortable.
Yeah, I got, I'm a, they felt a little bit more comfortable with it.
So, well, with that, we have a few minutes, then.
Okay.
If you want, we can go to the Town Administrator's Report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Your meeting schedule's here for two weeks, because next week you don't have a meeting, because of what's in July. Next, this Wednesday is Conservation Commission, Thursday CIP, next Tuesday, well, you don't attend that one. Wednesday is EDC, and, next Wednesday, and next Thursday, CIP. Your consensus folder tonight includes AP warrants, proclamation for the Knights of Columbus 50th Anniversary Event Permits, Next Level Performance is running an MDA charity event, July 23rd, and there's a Goffstown Main Street Program Concert Series from July 7th to August 25th, and then Goffstown Main Street Program has an art festival on August 8th, and then the 250th Bands Concert at the Tressle on August 27th. You have a right to inter Jones the Red's and Heirs Shirley Hills Cemetery, Section 3, Law 32, and some agreements. One is the, well, there are two agreements between the Town of Goffstown and Medville, one regarding 40 Country Way, and one for 82 Rachel Circle. There's also New Hampshire DOT Tower list, lease, I'm sorry, and you'd seen that before this year?
Mm-hmm.
But the chief ran into some issues getting that approved at the state level, and so they want to basically extend the 2010 for one year and 2011, and then what's in your packet is for 2012 forward at the new rate. And they have been paying in 2011, based in 2010, I just want it in writing, so if you could condition that on receiving that in writing from DOT, that the 2011 will be, continue to be paid.
We need that separate, if we need that as separate, then we should pull it out of consensus folder.
Why don't we pull it out, then? That'd be the safest way.
Do we need to, is there anything in the one from Medville that we need to review, or is that pretty much-
No, that's the language you had previously-
Okay.
-agreed to.
Okay.
And then your annual cost of living adjustments.
There was one last minute one, too. The, it was a letter to, um, the Historical Society-
Yes.
Requesting that, um, they assist us in trying to get some, um, memorabilia from the Historical Society here for the block party, because we did, uh, reach an agreement with Stark Hall to use that to display not only the bat, not only the displays that Tom Sousa made, but, um, also some folks have offered to show some historical things that they have personally. So we're trying to partner with them, recognizing that we'll have a few thousand people here in, in the village. It's a great opportunity for people to, I guess, partake in some Goffstown history rather than going to the Historical Society. So we've asked, we're asking them to partner with us in that regard.
Okay, so then we'll need a motion on the consensus folder without the-
DOT Tower Lease.
I'll make that motion.
Okay, is there a second?
Yes, second.
Any further discussion? All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye.
It's unanimous. Okay, and the, the tower lease, we need a separate motion.
I'll make that motion to proceed with the DOT, New Hampshire DOT Tower Lease.
With the-
Changes that were-
Conditioned on a letter from DOT regarding payment for two thousand and eleven.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Nick. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
It's unanimous.
Thank you. Now, on the pumper tanker contract that the chief brought up, you, um, do you want to authorize him to sign that contract, or do you want the contract also reviewed by Attorney Drescher?
I haven't, I haven't seen the contract, so-
Okay.
I, I don't-
What is customary? What, what have we done in the past?
You, you could authorize it conditioned on approval of Attorney Drescher, so we can get this going.
Yeah, this way it doesn't have to go back.
Yeah, I'll make a motion-
Both perform, the sample performance bond.
Okay.
Yep.
You got that, Catherine? I'll make that motion.
Motion by Scott to, um, condit, accept the conditional upon-
Attorney Drescher's review.
Attorney Drescher's review for the contract and performance bond.
Correct.
And authorize the fire chief to sign it.
And authorize the fire chief to sign it.
Right. Okay, is there a second?
Second.
That's a second. Okay, is there any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstaining? It's unanimous.
That was sent to Attorney Drescher earlier this evening, so. Assessor recommendations for current use, land use change tax lien release on map nine, lot four dash forty-eight.
Motion to accept the assessor's recommendation?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
It's unanimous.
Thank you. RFP for Historic District Survey, the Parker Station area was posted and advertised. The survey will be a hundred percent funded by a CLG grant, not to exceed nine thousand eight hundred dollars. There were five respondents, and all were determined to be qualified. For the record, the five respondents, um, and I'll give you these in writing, Catherine. John Milner Associates from Westchester, Pennsylvania, four thousand eight hundred ninety dollars. Douglas, Douglas McBarish-
McBarish.
From Collingswood, New Jersey, for five thousand four hundred and ninety dollars. Bruce Harvey, Syracuse, New York, six thousand five hundred. Priskagza Design Associates, Goffstown, New Hampshire, seven thousand nine hundred and eighty dollars. And Frederick Richards from Concord, New Hampshire, eight thousand five hundred dollars. Considering the National Park Service and New Hampshire Division of Historical Resources approves the hiring of the qualified firm with the lowest bid price, HDC recommends awarding the contract for historic preservation consultant to complete the Parker Station area survey as detailed in the RFP to John Milner Associates of Westchester, Pennsylvania.
Motion to proceed with, uh, John Milner Associates.
Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Nick. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
It's unanimous.
You know, Phil has a trivia question for you. You and Nick might get this one.
What's that?
What team did John Milner play left field for in the nineteen seventies?
What town?
New York Mets. I thought you might get that one.
No, I'm not a Mets. I didn't follow the Mets. I remember when the bums moved to LA.
Okay. Now they're bankrupt.
Okay.
All right. The town entered an agreement with Southern New Hampshire Planning Commission to update the school impact fee study by June thirtieth, two thousand and eleven. However, due to the delay in the release of specific data by the Census Bureau, we are seeking extension to the, uh, new deadline, September thirtieth, two thousand and eleven.
Okay, so we'll need a motion to-
Some move.
Is there a second?
Second with a question.
Sure.
Were there any impact fees that are, that could potentially expire between them?
No, these are, the current impact fees are in effect until-
They stay in place until you review it, and then it gets amended from there.
Right.
Okay. Okay. Any further, any other questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
It's unanimous.
Thank you. I know it sounds early, but we're already starting the two thousand and twelve budget process. The tentative schedule for budget presentation deliberations, where you pack it. Also, a five-year history of fund balance was also provided. Unfortunately, it wasn't in color, but I think you can see the difference. It shows the eight percent target and, uh, where we were each year. And that's after setting the tax rate, because that percentage, that balance, is what you retain, not at year end, but what you retain after you set the tax rate. And then it shows how much you used to fund balance when you set the tax rate.
Mm-hmm.
So that kind of gives you a snapshot. So we are in good financial health. And even though our target is eight percent, the range with DRA is anywhere from five percent to seventeen percent.
Right.
So we haven't, we're not close to seventeen percent, but we're just over the eight percent.
All right. Is there, um, are these, those numbers available for other communities or not through DRA?
I'm sure through DRA they are, because they're all on there.
You just had a curiosity, you know, where we were, because that's one of the questions I always ask when we set the tax rate.
Mm-hmm.
And all, everything that I get that we are, we appear to be in much better shape than the majority of them, and I was just wondering if we could confirm that.
So you want to know where every community, similar sized communities are in terms of percentage?
Well, not only necessarily-
They may have different goals, though.
But not necessarily similar sized communities, because we are surrounded by communities that are not the same size, but we're all in the same geographical area. We all have the same, you know, marketplace. We all have the same, uh, employment area.
We can get that, boy.
You know, and, and this geographical area is drawn on by, you know, the Boston area, other areas for, for work, as far as workforce. So the fact that we may not be the same size as some of the towns that are but us or, or right next to, you know, that close to us, we're still in the same-
I'm sure John can get us that information.
We're all in the same, we're all in the same boat, swimming in the same lake.
Also, at seven C, you have the five-year history of revenues that you had requested. You have the summary sheet as the first one, and then you have the detail after it.
I'm sorry, which was that, sir?
The revenue, five-year history of revenues. We did a summary sheet.
Right, right, right.
And then, uh, after that, you have the detail of each one of those lines.
Is there, just a question. Is there a way of getting the current year and where we're tracking?
We get that.
Well, included in here.
Oh, included in here, add one? Yeah, we'd, we'd have to, uh, if you were going to do that, you'd want to look at, like, July first of each of the past five years for it to have any meaning, right?
Mm-hmm. Yeah. So that might be tough, though.
No, it's all in the, um, software system.
Is it?
Yeah, they export it to Excel, and then they format it.
Just seems a shame to exclude this year, because this is kind of like one of the worst years we-
I wouldn't say it's the worst, it's one of the most active.
Well, it's one of the most active, but it'd be, it's probably a good snapshot to have, to see the trend.
Yeah, I'm not sure you're going to see a whole lot until we see the results of this budget.
Of the state budget.
Hmm. I mean, is the highway block grant, um, actually, when I saw Senator DeLisandro Saturday night, he is going to be emailing us how it's going to impact us this year and next year and the dollars.
Okay. So we'll try to get that, then?
Yeah.
Okay.
But I could do a summary sheet, like, a summary sheet enough for you?
Yeah, I, I guess what I'm, what I'm leading to, because we just meant, you just mentioned a couple of things that could dramatically impact us.
Mm-hmm.
Yet we're looking at five-year historical revenues to try to come to a decision that are going to be completely changed by some of the impacts that we're going to see this year.
Yeah, and you won't see those till later. So could we hold off on that? I mean, I think that's valid, but if we held off a couple months, we may have a better idea. So maybe do, like, September first, um-
Okay, that would be, that'd be three quarters of the way through.
Yeah.
To capture those other-
Past five, yeah.
Notes.
All right.
Okay. It's seven o'clock.
Oh, okay.
Well, actually, it's one minute of.
By the time he gets up here, you'll be good.
Yeah, you don't mind holding off these?
No, I can.
Okay. So... Did we finish the, um, we didn't, we didn't finish the tentative schedule for the budget yet. That's where we left them, we'll leave them off, right? Okay.
Well, we're the, we're down to the fourth bullet. It's the next one to be discussed.
Right, okay, but that's what, we're, we're in that section. Okay. All right. It is seven o'clock, and we are scheduled for a public hearing, uh, which is proposed springtime road posting policy. It is seven o'clock, and what I'm going to do is read the announcement. There was an announcement, uh, it's the Board of Selectmen will conduct a public hearing on a revised spring road posting policy on Monday, June twenty-seventh, two thousand and eleven, at seven PM at Town Hall, sixteen Main Street. The policy is available for viewing online at www.goffstown.com or at Town Hall Administration Office. Any person with a disability who needs a reasonable accommodation, please call the Town Hall, at least seventy-two hours in advance for arrangements. And there were public notices, uh, Union Leader, June ninth, two thousand and eleven, uh, legal notice, uh, page D-ten. Town of Goffstown Public Hearing, the Board of Selectmen will conduct a public hearing on a revised spring road posting policy, uh, Monday, June twenty-seventh, two thousand and eleven, at seven PM at Town Hall, sixteen Main Street. The policy is available. I sound like I'm repeating myself, but I'm actually reading the actual notice, uh, that was in the paper. Uh, is available for viewing online at www.goffstown.com or at Town Hall Administration Office. Any person with a disability who needs a reasonable accommodation, please call the Town Hall, four-nine-seven-eight-nine-nine-zero, extension one-hundred, at least seventy-two hours in advance for arrangements. Union Leader, June ninth. And with that, uh, I am going to turn over to Carl Querim, Director of Public Works, to present the proposed, uh, modified, revised spring road posting policy.
Carl? Thank you very much. Just by way, for folks watching, by way of, uh, review, um, the, the reason that we have a road posting policy is, um, in the springtime, in cold region areas, freezing region areas, as the frost comes out of the ground, um, water becomes trapped between the layer of frost in the pavement as it melts. It melts from the top down. During that period of time, the road is essentially floating on, um, on water. So the legislature enacted RSA two thirty-one colon one ninety-one, which gives communities and the state the right to post roads that are particularly susceptible to damage during these periods. Back in two thousand and one, the town, uh, as long as I know, the town has always posted our roads. However, in two thousand and one, the Technology Transfer Center at UNH, um, published a me, a method. It was always kind of done by feel, you know? When it seemed like the roads were getting soft, we'd all run out, put the signs up. And when it seemed like it was firming up in this, later in the spring, we'd all run and take the signs down. But it was very subj, it was very much, um, by opinion. In two thousand and one, this methodology was, was, uh, taught to us all. We embraced it and incorporated it into a, a policy that, that became the basis for this. And what we do is, all winter long, we track, uh, what are called cumulative freezing degree days. As, every day, we track the temperature, the average temperature, and you keep a running tally of that, all winter long. Subsequently, sometime around February, when the average temperature begins to warm, and the melting starts to occur, we have a mathematical formula where you plug that total degree days, cumulative degree days in, and it gives you an estimate of what the cumulative melting degree days you need to, to, when you should post the road and when you should unpost the road. So over the years, we've kept data and all this, and we have a pretty good handle on it. It seems to work pretty well for us. However, what, what we didn't do in two thousand and one is, we did not, uh, change our methodology of posting. We just had a flat twelve-ton, everything is posted to twelve-ton period. Over the last ten years, a lot of research has been done on, um, the effects of load on, on pavements. And there is actually a, um, mathematical formula for that as well, from, from a lot of different studies. And what we now see, and it just intuitively makes sense, is a ten-wheeler versus a six-wheeler, if you picture those two vehicles. You know, there's obvious, obviously, a lot more rubber touching the road, a lot more square inches of support. So the load, even though it's a bigger truck, it's spreading that load over a lot more-
Right.
-road surface area. So, you know, when you really kind of think about it and look at it, over the years, what has created a problem for us time and time and time again is, uh, obviously, everybody, all industries, all businesses endure winter in New England. It's just something we all have to put up with. In the springtime, certain businesses are very anxious to begin making money again. So folks like, uh, home builders, contractors, um, they are all very anxious to get their businesses underway in the spring. And we have worked with, like, the little oil delivery companies and the propane companies to make sure people can get their heating oil. But the large trucks that need to just get sand to backfill a foundation, or, um, last winter, it was a log truck trying to log a site and just trying to get the logs in and out, you know? That was a tractor trailer designed to carry, you know, to, to carry logs across gravel roads. So, and talking to these contractors who are trying to work with us to get permits, you know, those trucks couldn't even run over the roads empty, um, because of the weight of just the empty truck by our old policy. But as we really dug into the science of the loads, it, it just became apparent that we could modify, uh, and without too much confusion, uh, we could modify our load limits to take into account the extra tire, uh, contact with the pavement. And, and I think come up with a little more equitable, uh, way to handle vehicles and still protect our, our roads. So the major changes that we made, um, we also clarified a couple of things that in the past have been, um, understood but not written, such as, uh, emergency vehicles are exempt when we're out plowing the roads in the springtime, obviously, where we are over the twelve-ton limit. Uh, if there's a fire on somebody's street, a fire truck does need to get up there, they are over the twelve-ton limit. I mean, some of these things are common sense, but I do feel we should spell it out. The garbage truck going around picking up people's trash every week is obviously over twelve tons. There are a couple examples that I would like to get the board's input on after we, after I run through this. But essentially, what we're, the biggest, biggest change, I think, is strictly that, instead of a flat twelve-ton limit, we're going to go to a, a limit based on, um, the size of the vehicle. So, for a, for a single axle or six-wheel truck, the limit will actually go down just a little bit. It'll go from twelve thousand pounds down to ten thousand pounds, which is fifty percent of the legal load limit. What the studies have shown is a fifty percent reduction gives us ninety percent protection of the pavement. From there, you know, you can go down to, to, like, a forty percent reduction, and you're only going to gain a couple more, you know? It, it seemed like, when you look at the charts, uh, fifty percent seemed like the very reasonable, that's the cutoff point. For a ten-wheel vehicle, the, uh, weight would be at seventeen thousand pounds. And then, anything larger than that, like a four-axle truck, would go up to, uh, to nineteen tons, and a five-axle truck would go up to, uh, twenty-two tons. And we, instead of the little sign that we have today that just says twelve-ton limit, you've probably seen on bridges, when they post a bridge-
Yeah.
-there's like-
Different sizes.
-little pictures of the three trucks with the low limit. We would order signs like that. And then, for something like a cement mixer, where they have those big balloon tires, we would, there's the mathematical formula where it's so much a square inch, and the, uh, the mania, or the distributor or the contractor would have to come to us with a calculation of, this is how many square inches these tires are, and, and we did add in here, if there's a question, we could use our scale at the scale. They would come to DPW for the permit anyway. We have the truck scale right there, so we could just roll them onto the scale. This has been reviewed by Kerry Steckewich, just, you know, to see if it's enforceable in his opinion. He thought it was fine. So, that's basically it, unless there's questions. And then, like I said, I do have a couple suggestions. I just would like to get the board, the board's weigh-in on it.
Okay. Now, that's the reason why I'm going to do is I'm going to open the public hearing.
Okay.
Okay? And, um, I know Steve has a question for you.
Yeah.
You know, before, um, I turn it over to Steve for his question, uh, my understanding is that there is a typo?
Yes. On, um, the second page of the policy, right at the top, it talks about the load restriction, and it says, there's a fifty percent, but then it's crossed out and says forty-five percent, uh, reduction. And it, it should be fifty percent. The table in Appendix One, we didn't make the fifty percent, uh, in Attachment One. But in the written text, it says forty-five. It should be fifty.
Okay. Okay. Steve, you had a question?
Yeah, just a couple of quickies. And you, you kind of touched on one a little bit, was that an enforcement one? Because I'm, I'm looking at this also, and mind you, you see these large trucks, and you wonder what it weighs, what it doesn't weigh, what's half-load, I mean-
Right.
How, I mean, if, I mean, we talk about enforcement of this, how would, how would they go about that? I mean, how do you know if it's half-loaded when it's going down the road? How do you know if the cement truck's got this-sized tire? I mean, I mean, else you could tell somewhat of its size.
You know, the, um, I'll tell you that historically, we have, our vendors in town have been terrific to work with. We added the little paragraph about running them over the truck scale just for that reason. So, if there's a question, we have the right to just, all right, come on, follow us down to the transfer station, we'll see what you weigh. But I can tell you, working with, uh, the propane companies, the, uh, Manchester, you know, the aggregate people, uh, they've all been terrific to work with. They really do try. I, I think there's a recognition on the part of those, those vendors, um, that we are trying to work with them. They recognize that. We try to make it as easy as we can. We let them fax in the waiver forms, and, and we will respond to them and fax them back. We really try to be as friendly to our regular, um, folks as we can, and they really respond accordingly. The folks that we have a problem with are the occasional, you know, they come through town, they're not familiar with town, uh, somebody like that, the police may pull over and, and, you know, occasionally, we may question one of our regular folks, uh, if it seems like they're not doing things the way they should. But for the most part, they really try hard to, uh, to work with us. You know, e- for instance, Benson Lumber, I mean, they're all the way down in Derry or wherever they are. They, they call us regularly. They're delivering lumber up here. They know we post the roads, they'll call us, they'll find out when they can deliver, they'll schedule their deliveries around the weather, working with us, you know, they're terrific to work with.
I found a question to that, that, honestly, we're not the only community, community that does this.
Right.
Is the timing of this normally consistent through the, the local communities, or do we, or do they have, like, you know, someone might say, hey, we're starting, um, I'll just throw it there, you know, March thirty-first, versus someone says, we're going to go into April. How does that work?
You're doing, you're doing it by the days, the degree days.
Well, we do it by degree days. The towns around us, generally, their signs go up the day after ours do, and they come down the day after ours do.
So, so, so they run, so they run consistent?
Yeah.
Oh, that's what's-
Following your lead.
Yeah.
Right. They know, they know, they know the way that we do it, so rather than them having to deal with it and do the work, they just follow us.
Yeah. Yeah. Thank you.
Any other questions, of course? Okay. I'm going to open, I'm going to open it up to the public at this point, uh, just so that, uh, I don't see any members of the public here. Uh, I see two people here, which is, uh, Andrew and Chief O'Brien. Uh, you two are welcome to make any comments if you want, uh, as members of the public, uh, but I'm going to leave that open for a few minutes and see if anybody, any other members of the board have any questions, of course.
It's rush hour.
I know it's rush hour. Okay. Now, quarter after seven, uh, we're scheduled at seven, and we did open exactly at seven. Carl, do you have any other comments to make?
Well, you know, I'm sure the board has looked at this, there's, the only part of this policy that really gets subjective is when we apply, um, the, the permit to kind of override the policy. And you see in there my thoughts, um, the, the problem that I have, you know, being on the, the, uh, other end of the phone is, and you can imagine, you know, you get a call from, and I'll pick on the developer today, um, you get the call from the developer that says, "The first house I've sold in six months, you know, the closing is such and such, I have to get started today, it absolutely has to be done." Um, and like I said, you know, the aggregate people and the contractors will try to work with us, but, you know, early spring, there's only so much we can do. So, I tend to just, at, it gets to a point where you just don't have enough cold nights, so you're just basically shutting it off. For two or three weeks, it's shut off. The other one is, we have a, a local business in town that runs a nursery, you know, plants, and they get a shipment of plants, as you can imagine, early in the spring. The same time that we want to, the same time that we're trying to post roads, they're trying to get their inventory in because it, they're going to start selling plants. And, uh, they too try to work with us, but it creates a position where there's only so much you can do. So, you know, I don't know how the board feels about it. The last couple of years, we've just been lucky. The, the posting has ended right at the kind of critical time. But those kind of situations, um, I, I guess I welcome your input as to, if you think we're-
Well, I'll, I'll add to that. I mean, for example, this year, uh, there's, oh, there, there was a farm here in town that has manure picked up. And the fellow who picked up the manure was using a six-wheeler. And as a six-wheeler, he didn't ever had a problem. So, instead of making all these, constantly making the trips with the six-wheeler picking up, he went and he got himself a twelve, uh, you know, a twelve-wheeler, so I could do a little bit more. Well, the problem ran into this year with the posting of the road, the empty weight of the twelve-wheeler, he can't even come on the road. And, you know, having, looking at that and dealing with how much weight is he really putting in, it's a six, is he putting that weight into a twelve-wheeler, it's actually doing, it's better for the, our roads than with that weight being in the six-wheeler.
I gotta say it, but I think the story smells, Phil.
Right ahead. And that time of the year, you don't smell that much, believe me. But, but, no, these, these are, these are the type of, these are the type of things that, that happen. Carl, in providing an exemption, uh, to these weight limits, do you require a, a driver to be on the road at four o'clock in the morning, because that's the coldest part of the whole day?
Yeah.
Rather than at two o'clock in the afternoon?
Right. Generally, the way the exemptions work is, i-if it's going to be a freezing night, a very cold night, we'll put a time limit. You're going to be off the road by nine A.M., and we'll allow them to get in early morning when the pavement's hopefully still frozen, and, and that's how we try to work one. But, you know, as you get into, the posting typically lasts about six weeks. And when you start to get in towards the end of March, um, the nights just don't get that cold. So, that's when it creates the real inconvenience for folks, because they call me and I, if it's not a good cold frozen night, I say no. And, um, no, obviously, we don't have a big turnout here looking to lynch me, so I guess people are okay with it. But, um, I just wanted to make sure you all kind of knew how we apply the exemptions, when we don't apply the exemptions, and that you're comfortable with that. Because there's been, you know, it's been a little touchy with a few of our, a few of our businesses, and they, they're great to work with us, they try to work with us, but the phone does occasionally ring, so.
Yeah. Just a question, going back to the example that you gave with the nursery as an example, will, will this change help?
It'll help.
In that case, or where they could arrange for a different type of vehicle to make that, that delivery? Because I'm, I am concerned about that, those early-season deliveries that can make or break a business-
Right.
-and them not being able to, to get that merchandise in.
Yeah. This, this will definitely help. Whether it completely nullifies the issue, I don't know, but it definitely helps.
Just, just one question. Well, actually, it's a little bit of a theory. One, has this ever been a problem? Two, have we ever refined any? Or how does that work? And two, and three, if we do, how much is that fine?
I don't know the amount of the fine, but yes, we have fines. As a matter of fact, this last winter, we had a gentleman in court, uh, for a violation of this. And yes, we've had several problems. Every year, we have one or two-
Yeah, I hear.
-trucks that kind of go through the road or go off the shoulder.
Because, well, we saw that one this year. I'm not saying that was a pro, I mean, I don't know.
Yeah.
That was a different-
Yeah, but, but every year, that, that happens at least once. I mean, it's-
Yes.
Because I guess what I'm saying is that if there was, and there's fines, and we're talking, you know, and-
That's her father.
And when we see these roads that they've broken down to a state of, where we see the cracks in the water coming up, I'm just wondering if that, if, how that fine works relative to the damage, or how does that, or how does that, how's that correlate to the fine and how much damage a vehicle could do?
That, we actually, um, I believe, in the case where that road was damaged, we, we billed them the repair.
Okay.
The whole cost of repair, including the emergency, I believe, even the emergency response time.
Because there was a lot of time involved in that.
Yeah.
I was going to say, each, each year, when we reclaim more roads, those reclaimed roads go on this list. So, as, as we go forward in years, eventually-
The whole.
-the whole town will, will be subject, or not the whole town, we're going to have roads that are so old or so-
Yeah, we, well, and we, we do avoid-
But traveled on that-
Yeah, we do avoid, there's certain roads like, you know, Wallace and Henry Bridge that we just, I mean, I just know that we would definitely have a revolt on our hands if we, those are just main, main, main thoroughfares that-
Right.
-we haven't posted. Good. Thank you.
Any other questions on the board? If not, I'm going to close the public hearing at this point, on, uh-
Thank you.
What, what time are you showing?
I am showing seven-twenty-one.
Thank you.
And this is not, uh, an issue that we have to have two public hearings. We can take action on this now.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir.
Motion to accept the, uh, road posting policy presented to us this evening.
With the, with the typo?
With the corrections we discussed this evening.
Second. Any further discussion? Home in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstaining? It's unanimous?
Who was the second?
Thank you.
It was the second, thank you.
Okay, we'll go back to Town Administrator's Report. Fourth bullet.
Fourth bullet. Um, as we prepare the budget, we need to discuss our budget assumption for wages and health insurance. As a reminder, the police, um, contract was voted on at a town meeting, and next year that calls for, I believe, a step, but no cola.
Correct.
And the dispatch slash clerks gets a cola and no step, which-
They're equal, though.
Well, the cola is three-point-two-five percent, and steps are four percent, but not everyone gets a step. So, my question to the board is, typically, we follow whatever the union contract has for non-union. How, but this year, we have, we have it different ways, because we have, uh, two unions that are, negotiate something different. One had to negotiate it a step, and one negotiated it a go.
Let me ask you a question. When do we have to decide this?
Um, well, the department heads will be putting together their budgets in August, and so they're looking for direction and guidance from the board.
Well, I guess where I was going with that, uh, I don't think that we need to make that determination tonight, and I would rather not, I would rather have everybody think about this. You know what I'm saying? So, rather than just having, because when you, when you have a discussion nobody's thought about, we never know where, which way, how it meanders, and I'd rather not have a meandering type of discussion.
Could I just ask a clarification? So, so you're saying, on one, we, we have steps, but no colas, the other ones, we have colas, but no steps? Are you asking us which one we should be choosing, or, for instance, are there non-union individuals who will be getting a step and a cola? So, we would have to choose one or the other?
Well, I, I guess I'm just looking for general direction from the board. What does-
It's possible. I'm going to say that, as, to me, that's a possibility. It's, it's on the menu.
Typically, so you know, our internal process is that, uh, Linda, after she completed, well, this week, you have the adjustments for this year. Um, now she starts working on it for, library first, because a trustee's meet earlier for their budget. So, she needs to submit to them what the personnel numbers look like.
Right.
And so, we have asked, um, I've asked Linda to submit that by July fifteenth to each department head, whatever the assumption is, to put that in. So, really, it's not August, it's July that we need that number, which is right around the corner.
Okay.
And you don't meet next week. So, I guess the July eleventh would be the latest, if you wanted to think about it for a couple of weeks.
I would prefer to do that.
And then, we can give her guidance, and she can give those numbers to the department heads, so then they can-
Right.
-see what impact that has before they develop the rest of their budget.
Right. Okay.
Um, the other one is on health insurance. We always have to make an assumption on what the increase will be in health insurance.
Right.
Um, when we looked at the average of the past few years, it was like ten percent. But, again, we made adjustments-
Well-
-to get to that ten percent.
When you're saying that, um, and I'm going to, have we taken, let's say, the last three years, and taken the average increase over the last three years?
Well, it, we could do that, but we made adjustments in our plan in the last three years. So, one year, it was due to go up eighteen percent, but because of changes we made, it only went up like eight percent, or eight-point-five or something.
So, we need a little bit more-
Which we may-
-thought in the process.
We may have to revisit that as well. I mean, there's a lot of things that have to-
Okay. Now, I was just trying to look at if there was some way that maybe we can do it over that, but, no, you're right. Need a little bit more thought into that.
Yep. So, if you could think about that one, too, so that when you reconvene on July eleventh, um, we can get some guidance-
Well, let me just ask a question. Is it really up to us to think about, or is it, uh, some of the things that, I mean, I don't know, the people who work with this on a regular basis, you might have a better idea of, of what kind of a number than, than us?
Mm-hmm. I, I would put in fifteen percent. It's always easier to come down than to go up, and you won't have your final numbers when you, um, present to the Budget Committee on October twenty-second, because typically, that's the week they come in, the following week.
Well, would it be easier to just do that?
Use fifteen percent.
I asked Scott, since he's our rep to the Budget Committee.
You know, there's two schools of thought. I mean, you know, one school of thought is that if, as Sue said, you know, I, I think that health insurance is something that we have to continually look at year to year, look at, look, revisit the plans every year. So, when we say fifteen percent, you know, do we, are we satisfied that we would just absorb a fifteen, or that we would budget for fifteen percent increase, or would we say, you know what? Let's take a look at all the plans that are being offered. What type of savings, you know, could we possibly realize if we went to some different plans or had different options?
I'm not, I'm not disagreeing with it, but I'm just saying, as far as the, as far as we're getting a number in there-
Right. But you can also make the argument, you could just, you could not, I mean, I'm just thinking out loud here, you could not put in any salary increase, and you can put in, you don't have to put in any health insurance increase, and you can wait until we do, and then plug that number in, and it is, it's going, it's going to be a moving target, no matter what. Sue provided us information as to what the budget would look like for non-union employees if we went with the step and no cola, cola, no step, cola and step, all, so that's already there. You know what those numbers are on the, on the salary side, and then on the, if you want to get the same thing on the health insurance side, what would it look like, would they, that, to me, is helpful. That shows us what the, not, I'm not saying worst-case scenario is, but it just gives you that, that one, you know, the ceiling, I think. Um, and then, obviously, if you make any types of changes, then you'll, you'll get to another number. But, um, as, as the Budget Committee rep, it doesn't, I think the Budget Committee has historically recognized that we don't get our guaranteed maximum rates, so what is it, November or October?
Last week of October.
October. Last week of October. So, there's that recognition that there's, that there's variability in that. And, um, I don't know, I don't know, I do think that it's much, much easier, Sue said, that the number comes down as opposed to-
Well, that's, that's what I was getting.
-the number going up, so, yeah.
I mean, you want to use twelve percent?
But I'm saying you can do that up until the time that you make that budget presentation, which is gonna be in October. So I think we have.
So, you know, would you rather wait?
I'm, I'm trying not to have department heads use a different percentage increase in health insurance than the board.
Right.
Okay, because that's another whole calculation by finance.
But what we could do is we could say, formulate your budget. What? And leave that out, and then we will then plug it in for you at a later date.
So just leave it whatever it was last year?
Leave it whatever it was la-
Or this year, I mean?
This year. And then we could plug in an increase in health insurance of X percentage. And we could then plug in all the salary lines for whatever we decide. We could do that route. Or do you think that, that a department head is gonna say, okay, now that the board has given me direction and they want hypothetically, a 12 percent increase in health insurance and X amount on the wages, I'm gonna go and cut other areas of my budget to get to a certain target? That's a thing that they might do.
Yeah, that could be, too.
Have we seen that? And.
Can't we just give them the direction that they can't do that? It's gotta be within those areas.
I think it's safer to do as we've done in the past and we anticipate and we agree on an assumption that it's gonna increase by 15 percent or whatever. Take that and then adjust it when the final numbers come in. But let's not do two different assumptions, a department head assumption and a selectman assumption.
I'm comfortable, myself personally, I'm comfortable with a 12 percent assumption on health insurance. I am not, I am not comfortable giving you the, I'd rather mull over the whole issue of what we want to budget for wages for compensation. But I'm comfortable with 12 percent myself.
Is that okay? Okay, so we'll go with 12 percent.
And we'll come back and discuss on July 11th, you'll discuss.
The cola and the step.
Cola or step or whatever.
Sue, you know, for us to have fruitful discussions about compensation and overall compensation, I think we're gonna need to see, you know, especially on the health insurance and, you know, what play.
What 12 percent equals?
Well, no, what, not only does what 12 percent equals, but a year or two ago, we, we looked at some different plans with deductibles and, and different, different deductibles, different plans. And we were able to not have an 18 percent increase, but yet an 8 percent one. And I think that we're gonna have to revisit that as well, depending upon have that, have those, what those numbers look like. Because I'm just gonna tell you, from my private sector experience, my healthcare changes every single year. My contribution changes. I mean, I can't think of, maybe once in the last, it's, I don't know, I just seem like every year, there's something. Either there's a new plan that's a little bit less expensive or.
Just as a reminder, we don't have everyone on the new plan that we went to a couple of years ago.
Right, now I understand that.
And we're still transitioning everyone to that, but regarding.
You're talking about union and non-union?
Yeah.
Right.
But regarding the contribution to it, that may be another thing to look at. Because I, I want you to understand, when you change the insurance plans, you're also changing it for retirees.
Right.
And so, you know, we heard from some other retirees, when the copays went up as much as they did. But they're on the same plan, by state law, we have to offer them the same plan as current employees.
I'm, I'm just saying that there's a certain pot of money. And that certain pot of money is for wages and benefits. And if we're gonna give something for wages, then we may not be as generous on the benefits. If we give a lot on the benefits, we may not be as generous on the wages. I, to me, I, I see it, you know, you gotta, it's, it's not, it's not both on.
Basically, a moving target.
Yeah, but I.
And it's tough.
You're trying to say that the compensation is a, is a total compensation?
It's a total, right, you know, and, and we talked about this before, HR committee. It's about vacation days and sick days and this and that, it's, it's the whole thing. And so I think we have to take a look at, a look at that and try to go for that spot where everyone can be somewhat, somewhat satisfied. So that's, that's the, that's, to me, that's the difficulty. And I don't know what, I don't know what type of savings can be generated from different plans or alternative type plans. But I think that they do go hand in hand with the, with the total compensation.
Any other comments? Okay.
Thank you. And then your last item tonight was, this past Friday, we had someone come in looking for mission, permission to set off Class C fireworks from a raft on Glen Lake, 50 feet from the shore. Although, although they had started to inquire about this process back in April, we didn't hear anything more from them until this past Friday. And we have not received the certificate of insurance, which was supposed to arrive today, naming the town as an additional insured, should the board vote in that manner to allow it. We have heard from the police chief and he falls back on the 1988 policy set by the Board of Selectmen that it would not, they would not issue permits for Class C. And the fire chief has made me aware of a change in the state law this year that's effective June 14. I'm not real clear on it, the message kind of broke up, chief, so if you would like to.
Would your chief come up here and, do you have a copy of it?
I didn't print out the, the copy.
Okay.
But it's actually.
House Bill 291?
291, you got it. So if you look that up, what happened was through the legislative processes that, as you know, there was quite a, quite a few bills in, that were introduced this year. House Bill 291 was one of them. And it was, it was passed by the House and Senate. And it was one of those bills that, that passed without the.
Signature?
Signature of the governor. So it, it, it went into effect June 14th of this year. And what that did is it basically, in every year, the state would list a, it comes out of like 63 or 65 pages of permissible fireworks within the state of New Hampshire. It was devices that the state looked at as, as proper fireworks that, that didn't have too much propellant in it, not too much gunpowder, so on and so on. Right now, under the new RSA 160C, it basically said whatever the Consumer Product Safety Council comes and gives their stamp of approval on, as far as being regulated, that is part, now part of your permissible fireworks, to include reloadable fireworks. Folks that aren't familiar with reloadables is, is like a tube. And you could put the new firework in after, after the old one has been spent or, or fired. And it's up to inch and, inch and three quarter, I believe. So it's, it's a substantial, it's a substantial charge that goes off on this thing. My concern in this particular case, I talked to Ken Walsh from the State Fire Marshal's Office. And we reviewed the RSA. And it was designed to go, to give the general public the ability to display fireworks. And displaying it on their property. And if they don't have permission, if they don't, if it's not their property, they need to have written permission by the property owner to display it on their property or have that property owner there physically when the show goes off. So in this particular case, who's the property owner? It'd be the town of Gostown, I would assume. And.
You're asking who owns Glen Lake?
Who owns Glen Lake?
Can I, can I have a question here before we go too far? Because you said assume. And I'm just wondering also, when you talk about water, people with waterfront, et cetera, I know you can put docks, you can put lines out. I think it's up to 150 feet, you know, but so I'm saying this guy's going out 50 feet. I'm not saying who owns the water, but there's usage there. And so I'm not sure, when you say assume, if it's yes or no. I mean, I just don't want to, I don't want to have an assumed word out there, I'm looking for a final word.
I specifically asked the, the fire marshal about that. And he says sometimes in the cases where you have associations, lake associations, they, they all contribute and they have a deciding board or factor on, on the operations of, of the lake. Like, for example, a Horse Lake Association up in, up in Ware and Deering. You can't do anything in that lake without the association knowing about it or set policy on it. So in effect, that water body is controlled by that association. In a case where you don't have an association, the town or the governing body rules, rules over the day-to-day activity on, on, on that water, water body. So in this particular case, he says, a few factors to, to be aware of is, is creating a precedence and the level of liability the town would have. And when asking about a certificate of insurance, he says he would challenge that, that certificate of insurance because it sounds like it would be on that person's homeowner's policy. And the, the, the policy owner or the policy provider may not be aware of what they're actually insuring in this particular case. And he also mentioned the potential contaminant by paper, debris by the fireworks. And who's gonna handle, who's gonna handle the, the complaints that may come of that, having debris washed up on shore. So there's, there's a few factors to be considered here. My, my particular factor that I wanted to make aware is the safety factor. We don't know how much they're gonna be setting off, what they're gonna be setting off. They said it's a floatable barge or, or a float. With Class C fireworks that are, that are permissible, you have to physically light them. So you're gonna need somebody that's within arm's length of these fireworks going off.
In this case, on the raft.
On a raft or on the raft. So if something were to happen, there's, there's a high potential risk of injury or even death. And then you've got people in close proximity not knowing what they're gonna be firing, firing off. 50 feet may not be enough, depending on how close the, how close the spectators are. So, you know, my, my question is, what level of risk the town is willing to, to extend for something like this to happen?
Okay, this, this request was for the 4th of July, right?
For the weekend.
Next week.
This weekend.
That's what I'm saying.
It's two, he wanted to do two days. From what I, from what I read.
All right, and your recommendation is no?
Again, not knowing what they have for quantities, what they're gonna be firing off, how they're gonna be firing off, other, other safety factors, it just doesn't make sense to put somebody at risk out there trying to light these things off.
Steve?
Question, and, and if, and I just hope I understand this correctly. So if he was to do it on his property, this would be permissible?
No. The board would still have to give, give permission on this.
Only with issuance, permission from the Board of Selectmen. But in, on the May 16th, 1988 Selectmen's meeting, they voted no permits for Class C.
Correct.
So that's where we're at?
Yep.
So right now, this would be permissible in Gostown?
No.
No.
As of that date?
As of that date, it was not. The law had changed at that time also. And that's why the police chief at that time, Steve Monier, and the fire chief, Richard Fletcher, came to the Board of Selectmen saying that, you know, the law had changed and you don't have to issue permits. You can develop a policy not to, and they recommended that there be a policy not to allow. And that's what we, the police chief operates under now, that it's not allowed.
Okay, and how does this new statute affect the policy that the board passed in 1988? Is there any effect on it? I mean, sometime, it might have an effect, it may not.
No, I don't see, from what I can read in it, it changes what the list of permissible fireworks is, but it doesn't affect 160C six, local option, or the permissible use. Those sections, as far as I've been able to see, I don't see any change to those. So municipality that still prohibits it is allowed to prohibit the display of permissible fireworks.
So we, so as a board, though, we could actually change and make a different vote on this stuff?
It's a local option.
Yeah, it's a local option. It's a local option. The only concern, concern that I would have, because I mean, the chief brought up a few points, not knowing what they're gonna, what they're going to shoot off or how many. I don't know how that affects what our insurance requirement would be, what our liability is. And a concern that I do have is even though you get a certificate of insurance, what we would need is our carrier to let us know what they require on the certificate, on the accord certificate, how they wanted it worded. And then we would have to make sure that we get it that way. I mean, we need to be able to define what our possible liability could be. And I just think without defining the town's liability, we're voting on something that we don't know what the liability is. And I would have a concern about that.
Would Fish and Game also be involved, since it's a patrolled water body?
The Marine Patrol may, maybe want to, want to know about this, if it, if it is approved.
Yeah, I mean.
I'm gonna jump in here.
Go ahead.
I remember we talked about this a little while back. And the first question I had at that point was, have we had problems? Have there been fires and, or people hurt? And I think the answer was no, if I remember correctly.
Last year, we, we did have fires caused by fireworks because it's so dry. This week, this, this year has been cold and wet, so, so far, so good.
And the other thing I think we spoke about a little bit was the idea of, I mean, when we talk about the 4th of July and Labor Day, I mean, fireworks are something that, that are used in communities. People's, I mean, you go to Manchester, you go to Nashville, they have large-scale fireworks. We're gonna have some for our 250th.
Right, but.
But we're controlling it and.
I'd like, I'd like to finish this.
Oh, I'm sorry.
And they sell these products, I mean, anyone, well, of age can go in and purchase it. I think sometimes we get to a point and we can find a case for anything to say, oh, this could be, this, you know, this would not be, this could be dangerous or something, and we can get to that. But I think there comes a point where celebrations are now, you know, we, you know, we're stifling a celebration that's something that we should be celebrating on. And fireworks are part of that, get-togethers are part of it. People look forward to these events. And I'd hate to see us go down this road of, of, of looking at this thing while, you know, looking for some possibility of some thing that that might happen. And to, to hold all members of the community into something that's quite boring, if you want my personal opinion of how people would normally celebrate around here. I, I really, you know, it, there comes a point in time, you just have to say that people have been, these have, it has been going on. We all know that. People have been exercising good judgment. You don't hear about these large-scale problems with it, and people actually enjoy this. And I, I'll say myself, as a, as a member of this board, I'd hate to see us be the ones that say, hey, we're gonna stop this and the 4th of July celebrations and Labor Day celebrations will not be as you've always remembered.
Well, I think the board said that in 1988.
I know, but they, they have continued to.
Well, but.
Well, I don't know what community you're living in and you're driving around on 4th of July around here.
Well, the reason these people came in.
I never issued a permit.
Right, no permits ever been issued since 1988. And enforcement, I, this is why these people are in, because last year, they were prohibited from doing it through the enforcement process.
A quick, quick note, when we talk about display fireworks, when we're doing Class B shows, similar to what we're gonna see, see in August for the 250th, that's done by a professional company. They're highly regulated, they're high, they're licensed, they're inspected. The state will inspect them, I'll inspect them. They go through a long process of, of licensing and accreditation. And they, we know exactly what they're gonna shoot off, how they're gonna shoot it off. And a lot of safety mechanisms, mechanisms are put into play. So we try to ensure that the public is safe when these shows go off. So when we have fireworks, I always say, well, you know, I enjoy them too. And I don't want to be a wet blanket for anybody's barbecue or anything like that. But, you know, let, let something that, that involves power techniques and fireworks to the professionals. That way, it doesn't ruin somebody's weekend or, or day or, or the rest, the rest of their life. And I, I understand what, what the selectmen here is saying. But that's why we, we spend a lot of money for this, for this program that we're gonna have. And it's gonna be a fabulous program, I can totally believe it at that.
Correct me if I'm wrong, but we got this less, about a week before.
4th of July.
4th of July. And not to diminish what you said, Steve, because I, I understand it. But I would have personally felt more comfortable if we knew about this a month ago, maybe two months ago. And perhaps this gentleman could have worked with the fire chief and put those safety mechanisms in place. And maybe we would have had an opportunity to have a discussion. But he inquired about it months and months ago, and then one week before, oh, here. And I just think that's, that's an unfair position to put the, the fire chief and our board in.
And the police chief.
And the police chief. Because it, and it's like, oh, you're being party poopers. No, we're not being party poopers. Ultimately, our job is to ensure that person's safety and all the residents' safety. And do the best we can to minimize that risk without being a party pooper. And I think we would be in a completely different position if it was more planned out a month or two ago. And the chief could have said, you know what, I've talked to this individual, this is what they're doing, this is, this is, and, and I feel comfortable. They're taking a little risk, but I'm okay with it. But we never got to that point, because it was a week, you know, a week away. So I don't, I don't feel bad about not granting this and following the chief's recommendation.
Just a comment to that, I don't think this conversation would have been different if it was today or one month ago. It still would have been the same piece, and, and I don't think the chief would have been changing his opinion. Not, you know, and I can't, I don't want to, I shouldn't speak for you, but I'm saying, this was the same piece where we were last year when we talked about these types of things. It, it hasn't been looked upon as something that, from, 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 from the, from the fire department end, as something that, hey, we don't, we don't want to see it go beyond professionals doing it. So I don't think it would have made a difference today, or 30 days ago, or 60 days ago. That's been where we've been, that's where it's been going from, from when, when, when the chief was here the last time to this time. And Lieutenant Connor, I think, is in, in the same, same part, if I, if I make my kick. So all I'm saying is that I don't think the timing is the issue. The issue is, is this something that, as we go down the road, are we gonna say if people want to have fireworks to celebrate occasions? people want to have fireworks to celebrate occasions, that, you know, we're gonna have these processes, what process is gonna be in place, and how much time do they have to come before, and are we gonna do it, what has to be in place, for something that's happened throughout, that, throughout as long as I've been a kid? And I think we're going down a real sad road here, and, and you can call it party poop, you can call it wet blanket, I think it's really sad, when, when you talk about Fourth of July and Labor Day, and you, and, you know, and even in the winter, when people sometimes do this for New Year's Eve, I think we're going down a sad road.
Nick?
Just listening to both sides, I'm gonna make a motion that we deny the, the request.
Can I ask you to hold off on that?
Sure.
Just, because I know the chief wanted, and I wanted to say something.
Yeah, just real quick to respond to Selectman Fornier, you know, I've, I've worked for a community that, that we were able to work with, you know, the Selectmen had the same, same issues, concerns about permissible fireworks in their community, especially when you had homes, in other words, everything else pretty much close by down, especially down by the, down by the beach. And we're able to work, work a policy around, so, you know, with, with amount of time in advance, we had a site plan, we knew what they were gonna shoot off, how much, we worked with them on that, and in fact, you know, when there was some question on risk, we, we would have, you know, firefighters standing by with some equipment, just, just to give them that extra level of, of protection. We were willing to work with them on that, but again, it's just having something that's handwritten and not knowing what, what, how, and where, and how they're gonna pull this off, is difficult to make that, it's difficult to work with that, that person in this particular case.
I'm just gonna say one thing, and then I'll let Nick make his motion. Steve, I understand exactly where you're coming from, and let me just say, and I don't know, Nick might be familiar with it, and Scott might be familiar with it, but I grew up in Chinatown in New York City, and I remember Chinese New Years, and the dragon dancer, and the tail of the dragon, and the drummer, and mats and mats of firecrackers were lit off, along with ash cans and cherry bombs, and that drummer, and he, he banged those drums, the tail of the dragon, and the, and the fellow that was in the head of the dragon, they did the dance, and there were so many fireworks going off over there, you couldn't hear anything, you'd be deaf after it. Today, it's not done anymore, you know something? To me, that's not Chinese New Years anymore. It's a tradition that's gone in New York City, okay? It's gone, and I don't know if you, any of you guys had seen the old, all right, I understand what you're saying, and in San Francisco, they have a new thing over here, the Fourth of July ones that the city wanted to put off, they said they had to have an environmental study, I can understand where you're coming from, but I think this coming in at the last minute, I, I think what we need to do is put something together to see how we can allow these, maybe there's a way that we can permit them in the future, but there has to be a certain time, and there has to be certain things that we need to know, and we need to make sure, we need to know the risk that we're, we're putting taxpayers in with this, I mean, and that's a concern that I have, so, let Nick make his motion.
Thank you. Well, and my motion is based not on the broad conversation that we've had, whether or not there should be a policy and the patriotism of fireworks, it's, it's this, it's, it's the request that's before us tonight.
Right.
Based on the items that the fire chief brought up, as far as, you know, having something offshore, people having to be right there next to these Class C fireworks, setting them off, the inability to reach that person in a timely manner if something goes wrong, the issues that Selectman Gross brought up about us being only a week before, so I'm not making a statement as to the broad...
Right.
...policy of whether or not we should have fireworks on the Fourth of July. I'm looking specifically at this request, and that's where my motion is coming from, to deny this particular, specific request for fireworks.
There's been a motion, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, discussion, any further discussion, comments? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed?
Nay.
It's four, one, zero.
Would the chairman like to consider asking the police chief and fire chief to come up with a policy recommendation in the future, so if any questions are asked?
Yeah, I don't have a problem with that.
Or to review our current policy?
The, the fire, Bill Connor, I believe, worked on a fireworks policy.
Yeah, the chief submitted a ordinance.
I'm pretty positive, yeah, to the board, an ordinance, correct.
It was restrictive in regards to the new permissible one.
Right.
And we can draft it to, to look at the use of permissible fireworks.
Right.
And the process on getting a display approved by the board.
Support that.
Steve, do you have a comment?
Well, it doesn't matter, the vote already passed, and so, we're saying we don't even have, even if the gentleman had come in timely, we have nothing in place.
What we have in place is a policy that there's no permits.
But there's no, yeah, so we have nothing in place.
We could not have accommodated on the current policy.
Right, and what's... We could change that policy.
Right.
This board could change that policy.
What we're looking at is changing the policy.
Changing the policy.
Reviewing the current one and making recommendations to change.
If I could, but just to answer, if this board chose to change that policy, it created the policy, it could change the policy.
Yes.
So, we're not, we're never bound by it.
And I would say that it should be more than a policy, it's that important, and it should be an ordinance.
Well, let's pass, let's cross that path, let's, let's let them see what they come up with, and the other thing that I want to make sure with it is, is what our insurance carrier...
And I think when they study that, they can get that information, too.
And can I, and as, if, as we go forward with this, and I just wanted to make another comment, that I, I know Selectman Gross, when you were trying to do some things for the 250th, the amount of work and effort that you were trying to do to get through some of these things with forms, and, is that it became, it became a chore more than just something that we would normally go through a process to do, can we make it a simple one? Does that make sense to everyone?
How about a 10-page ordinance?
You know, and you, you gotta have this, this one's gonna check, I mean, it's, it's like, you know, it's like going into, you know, we're talking citizens of the town, some, you know, and, and I'll guarantee you, this gentleman here, and this is the sad part about this, is trying to do the right thing, letting people know, I'll guarantee you, it's probably something that happens every year, all the, all the, I, I'll guarantee you that all the local camps, or homeowners there are waiting, ready, and wanting to see this happen, I'll guarantee it, and what's gonna happen the Fourth of July this time? That's all I'm gonna say. This is very poor, very, very poor.
Scott?
Ordinances and policies are intended to protect the citizenry, period, that's just my, you know, their safety and their well-being and their enjoyment of life, and I would, while I think that, while you are envisioning the celebratory things like New Years and Fourth of July, and people doing traditionally what they have done, let's not also forget, on the flip side, the nuisance value of fireworks, the fact that every single Fourth of July, you hear about the person who either was killed, lost an arm, blind, was blinded, you name it, it happens every single year, and it'll happen this year, so it is our job to protect the citizens, even the citizens who think that they're so good and so smart that they won't get hurt, it's still our job, that's what society does. But I, I also think, you know, and having lived in some areas where M-80s were going off, like, there is, this is a quality of life thing, I think we all like the beautiful fireworks displays, and it's, it's nice, but what I, I tell you, I don't like, and I don't think residents and neighbor, and residential neighborhoods would like, is if you had nothing, and no regulation, and, and M-80s were going off all over the places, or they were, you know, it was being done at all hours, so there has to, there has to be some degree of regulation to protect the well-being, the safety of, of its citizenry, I agree it shouldn't be too onerous, but, you know, that's why we've got speed limits, and that's why we've got laws to ensure food safety, you name it, for those one in a million things where it happens.
I won't say this man just, you, you know, you're talking mayhem, and we realize this man's asking from nine to 10, okay? I will guarantee you, there's more risk during the next big block party coming up with traffic and people and drinking and alcohol than there is at this, this event, I will guarantee you that.
I don't agree.
I guarantee you...
Well, I can guarantee you this, is that at least, right, at, at least the proper authorities are involved in the planning, there are contingencies developed, and you have a plan. This gentleman, God love him, and I, I appreciate his effort to, at least to try to do the right things, I think he did that, but they, what, there is no plan, there is no, and if something were to happen, who's gonna save this person's butt in the middle of a barge, if all of a sudden, there's an errant, you know, mortar or something, and, and the whole thing catches on fire, and he's on it, tell me who's saving it, I just want to know, does he got a plan in place, because it's not written out?
I will tell you, there are more bars and permits and things for businesses that cause more problems when people leave late at night than it's gonna happen on Fourth of July fireworks in the town of Gosstown. But we, but we have those permits, we have those ordinances, and we say, oh, we've done the right thing, and things are all hunky-dory, this is silly, this is guy running off fireworks, nine to 10 for that area, and you're trying, and, and we're making it much more than what it is, and we talked about safety and ordinances and all that, I'm, I'm telling you, drive, anyone who, to, anyway, we haven't, we have a lot more DWIs and accidents than we, than, in, in the course of a year, because of vendors and alcohol in bars, and we won't discuss, that's a fact.
You might be right.
Any further discussion on this?
Take a break.
What's that?
We take a recess, if possible.
Actually, I think we're almost done.
I know, but I have...
Okay, we'll take a, board's gonna take a five-minute break.
Eight.
And...
Let's pop.
What, what's broken?
Snap things.
Oh, okay, snappers. We're done with the town administrators' report, I believe, so we have a Selectmen's discussion, new business, I don't think we have any new business, old business, we have some appointments.
And there was a new application received today.
Yeah, I got a copy of it over here, I believe you left it here.
Yes.
For cable access, for Cable TV Community Access Committee?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
And, and it looks like, according to the website, you have two alternate openings on that committee, so you have two full and two alternate.
Okay.
On the cable committee.
Which committee or council are we gonna discuss first? I don't know.
Order?
Order in here.
You can take the easy one.
I put an alpha order.
On the list was cable.
Is there an easy one?
This is in your H3 of your...
We don't know.
H3 of your packet, in the very, very beginning.
Oh, wait a minute, that's what's throwing me off, was this over here, hang on a second, okay.
I just put an alpha order by committee.
Yeah, okay, all right, cable committee, we have two full vacancies, and...
We just notified, there are two alternates as well.
Right, plus two alternates. All right. So, in, looking at the websites today, this particular committee has no term posted on the web.
Their bylaws stay, three-year terms, and they alternate, so...
They're staggered.
Yeah, they're staggered.
Right, when it was set up, it was originally set up that way. Website has the terms, full conservation, has terms for economic, under cable, no terms.
Okay.
That's my point.
Good, thank you.
Scott?
I'm gonna start the process then, if I may.
All right.
I'd like to make a motion to appoint Pam Manny to the cable committee for a full vacancy, for the, for one of the full, the, whatever, the permanent position.
Is there a second?
Yes.
Okay, discussion, any discussion?
Question, you said full, how many vacancies are there right now?
Two.
Two full, two...
Two full, two alternate.
Okay.
Okay.
Uh...
I have a question.
Yeah.
Just, according to our procedures, I thought we have, for instance, if there's two vacancies, then we each have two votes, and we look at all of the, all of the people who have applied, and we give our two votes to the two people we want, and the people who receive the most votes receive those vacancies.
That was my understanding also, that's why I was...
That's why I'm on the question.
That's why I was asking a question, how many vacancies?
Versus taking each person, one at a time, and making a motion, and, because we have multiple vacancies.
Yeah, but wait a minute, I thought in that procedures, each person got done.
I, I, 'cause, well, going this way, let's just say if you had three people with two vacancies, and you took the first, you, well, you follow around going, all of a sudden, all of a sudden, yes, you vote one out, then, then the spots narrow down, and someone might say, well, geez, I would have done a different...
Third person doesn't even get a vote.
Yeah.
Or a chance to be a vote, but when you look in our rules of procedures, if there are two vacancies but three people, each of us only get two votes, but all three people are considered.
So, we can just go around and say, who are the two people that we want to see? Want to do it that way?
I'm not, I'm, I'm sorry, but I'm not following you guys.
I am.
I'm not following you guys.
Basically, what, what we're saying is that we would go around, because we have three people looking for two positions, we would go around the table hypothetically, and Steve would say, I am in favor of this person and this person, and you'd write it down, Nick would say, I'm in favor of this person and this person, you'd write it down, and we go around and we're done, and at the end, if one person had, say, five...
I don't think that's what's in our rules of procedures.
It says, during the appointment process, each board of Selectmen member shall have the opportunity to speak regarding the qualification of any nominees. Candidates are selected by motion and second, recognized by the presiding officer, followed by a majority affirmative vote. In the event there are more candidates for vacancy than positions, the presiding officer shall call each candidate by name, and members shall say yea, provided, however, that members have only the number of votes for which there are vacancies.
So, I believe each name comes up.
And you say yea or nay?
Yes.
Correct.
Okay.
Or just yea.
Thank you.
So, would you, let's follow the process through then, so you have three people, you do the full, you have two full member vacancies, so you go around, you name the three, and you say yea or nay.
It's the same thing as what you, what you just said.
And so, the one that gets most votes, the two that get the most votes are full members, as a result of that?
It's, falls in the same way, just, just, just from the way how it rolls out, that's all.
So, do we need a motion to present all three names, or consideration?
No, I think it's just the chair just says, goes down, okay, how many for this person? Yea or nay, say yea if you're for this person, and then you record that number, and then you go to the next person, how many for this person?
But, but I would say that the last person doesn't, we, we would look at the full members as positions.
Yep.
Then we would do the same process for alternate.
Or the alternate members.
Just because you didn't get a full position doesn't automatically mean you're an alternate.
Right.
Gotcha.
That's exactly it.
Okay, so do you, are you gonna withdraw that, that motion, or that was made and seconded?
Well, you need, you need that anyway.
Nick, if I may, if it did come down to that, and it's one person for one, then you wouldn't necessarily do that, you could say that person's name, and then you're, or do you believe it should be a motion to...
When there's only one person in one position, then it's a motion.
Motion, gotcha, okay, I'm fine with that.
Well, I guess the difficulty that I have with this, what we just described, is if you have full positions, and you have alternate positions, and now you're take, you're treating the full positions with all the people who've applied for the full positions as one, and you're taking all the people who applied for the alternate positions as another, okay? Then what are we gonna wind up doing, say, oh, we got one left over from that, we got two left over from that, now we're gonna take all the names, and now we're gonna, we...
A good example would be conservation, there are five people.
Right.
There are two full-time positions.
Correct.
So, the way I read our procedures, we would have name one, a vote, yays, name two, name three, name four, name five, the top two vote-getters are the full-time positions. Then we would redo that procedure for the alternates, and name the remaining three people.
No, we wouldn't. It would be motions for the remaining three, because it's three for three.
Yeah, but you're making it, but you, but you, but, but the problem that you have is when you do that, if you're taking a full member, a person who is currently an alternate member and putting him into a full member, now you've made an opening in how we're gonna deal with it, that's why, to me, is if you deal with each person on an individual... to deal with it. That's why, to me, is if you deal with each person on an individual...
You're not creating an opening, because these people are all up for renewal.
Every one of them, whether they're alternates or full, they're up.
So we're not creating any new positions if a full member becomes an alternate?
To me, their status is moot.
I support all that because the, these applications don't say, I'm applying for the alternate position.
Yeah.
We have to assume they're applying for a full position. And, and if we appoint them to an alternate position, and then tomorrow morning they say, well, I don't, I never wanted to be an alternate, well, that's a, they can resign at the.
To me, it seems to me like we're making this much more complicated.
I'm good to go.
I'm good. Okay, so what are we doing? Is there a motion on the second or not?
Well, no, I, I think where it has to go is because, if we go, start with cable committee.
Okay.
I think as chair, you would say, all those yea to, for Don Gagnon to be a full member, say aye. And then you would record how many of us did that. You would then go to the next one. How many full membership William Winn? You record how many yays. And then the next one, how many full membership Pam Manny?
We each have two votes.
Right.
Correct.
You can only vote twice.
Okay, but where's the motion in the second to put them on?
There is no motion or second.
So people are being appointed without a motion and a second?
Motion to proceed with appointments for full vacancies for cable committee.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. So now we're going to proceed with the motion, with, with, with the vacancies.
Right.
Okay?
So you have to just record, you know, you, basically you'd state, all those in favor of Don Gagnon as a full member, say aye, and we record how many?
Yes. I think we have to say yea.
Yea.
All right, let me go back to my list.
Are we ready to vote?
Okay, but for cable committee, we have three.
Right.
Names. Okay, so add Pam Manny to your list.
Correct.
Yes.
Okay?
Point of order, Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
I think the previous motion needs to be withdrawn.
Well, that's where I was go, well...
It was never seconded, so.
It was seconded. Dave Pierce.
I did.
It was seconded.
I withdraw my second.
I'll withdraw my.
But the whole, whole process that we made with a motion and a second on the table, then there was another motion and second that was voted on that shouldn't have been voted on.
Okay, well.
Okay, so it was a...
We have withdrawn our motion.
They're, they've been withdrawn.
Okay. All right, so Don Gagnon, then. All those in favor?
Yea.
Yea. All those opposed?
No, no, there is no oppose.
No, no oppose, it's just yays.
Just yays.
Yea.
How many yays are there? I lost count. One, two, three, four? Four yays on Don. Who was the fourth yea? Phil was yea.
Okay. Uh, Pam Manny?
Yea.
Yea.
Yes. Uh, Bill Winn?
Yea.
Yea. Well, wait a minute.
I voted my two.
I did not vote two, and I'm not, I don't have to vote two.
Didn't see that one coming, did you?
No, but it still works. Fourth, four, three, two.
Moment of silence here, please.
There was a, it was four. Don Gagnon, three. Pam Manny, two. Bill Winn.
Now, on these votes, do we have to record who voted which way? Because you know how we do that for minutes? Do you have that? I'm trying. Okay. So the four, you know who the four were? Yes. Who voted for Don? Yes. You know the three that voted for PM? Yes. And you know the two that voted for Bill? Yes. Okay.
Okay.
So that leaves one alternate position needing to be filled.
Right, and then there would need to be a motion.
No, there's two alternates.
No, there's, there are two alternate openings, but one person. So that would be a motion that's needed.
For the remaining person, if you wish to put that person into a vacant, vacant alternate.
Right, so the...
I'll make a motion to appoint Bill Winn to the alternate position.
Is there a second?
There's a second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Yea.
Aye. And this you would have opposed, because it's a single position.
Okay, all those opposed?
Nay.
I'm abstaining from the vote. It's not an endorsement, and it's not a, it's, that's...
Mr. Chair?
Well, it doesn't matter what, it doesn't matter, because the, the motion would pass. Got two yays.
No, if you voted no.
No?
It would fail.
It would fail.
Two, two. Abstain.
I'll abstain. No, no.
Wait a minute.
Let's start this over again here.
We take the vote, so I know each person's position.
I'm abstaining.
Scott abstains.
Okay.
Two ayes, and Nick and Steve. Steve and Nick. And Dave's a nay, and we're waiting for Jim.
I'll vote nay.
You'll vote what?
Nay.
Nay. So it's two, two, one.
So the motion fails.
Thank you for clarifying.
Economic development, one alternate vacancy, Andrew Catterett.
Motion to appoint Andrew Catterett to the alternate vacancy.
Second.
Is that a second? Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. It's unanimous.
Motion to appoint Kathy Samard to solid waste.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Unanimous.
And then we do the same thing for conservation?
Correct.
Okay.
There's only two full positions, correct?
So is there a motion?
No, we have to go through the whole process again.
Motion to proceed with Phil?
Motion to proceed, yeah. Proceed with the appointment of two full members for Conservation Commission.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Evelyn Miller?
Yea.
Yea. Susan Tucker?
Yea.
Yea. Charles Freiberger?
So wait a minute. Evelyn had two yays, and that was Nick and Phil. And then you went to Susan Tucker. And then Susan Tucker has two a, yays, sorry, and that was Scott and Phil?
Yeah.
Okay. Just want to make sure we got ya.
Okay, Charles Freiberger?
Yea.
Yea.
Who said yea? You only get two votes.
I get two.
Yeah, that's Phil's.
That's the second vote.
He said, yeah, you voted for Evelyn and Susan Tucker.
Oh, wait a minute. I'm sorry. I apologize. I apologize. I, I... We've got to start over again then. I didn't realize you only get two votes.
Yep.
I mean, we know you're the chair, but.
No, I apologize.
Use them carefully.
No, 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 no. Okay.
Motion to start over?
I like that motion.
Do over.
This can't be easy, can it?
Okay. New.
It's okay.
New vote.
We each have two votes.
Yes.
And we have to make up in our mind right now which of the two we're voting for.
Right.
That is correct.
So we're beginning with Evelyn Miller again?
Yes.
Okay. We're starting with Evelyn Miller now.
Right.
Did we get it? Any yays?
Yea.
Nick is yea.
Okay, one. Susan Tucker?
Yea.
Yea.
Scott and Phil are yea.
Okay. Charles Freiberger?
Yea.
Steve is yea.
How many?
Steve is yea.
Just one so far.
Just one so far.
Richard Meaney?
Yea.
Yea.
That was? That was three? Steve, Dave, and Scott are yea.
Correct.
Hang on a minute.
Phil doesn't know where he has to go, and I don't blame him. Phil, you have one vote left.
I, I didn't even think, okay, well...
You voted on Susan Tucker.
I, I intend...
So the way it works now is Nick, Phil, and Dave have one more vote.
Correct.
I, okay, because I intended to...
Or up to one vote.
I hadn't intended to vote for Freiberger, but that would give him two.
Yeah.
You can still cash.
You can still do that.
Okay. And then, Colas Adams?
Yea.
Yea.
Okay.
That puts us in an interesting spot.
No, we just redo it. That's all.
So.
We do it on the...
Richard Meaney is a three.
Richard Meaney is in.
Is in. So, so we look at the remaining four and take a revote, is that what we do?
Yep.
Yep. Did you finish Colas Adams? Yes, two. Nick and Dave.
And we only get...
Now, so Richard's in, and now we're going to do a retake on the other four.
So what are we doing now?
You're doing a retake on four. Evelyn, Susan, Charles, and Colas.
No, Evelyn got one vote.
Yes, she would not be, yeah.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
So it would just be, it would be Sue Tucker, Charles Freiberger, and Colas Adams.
And we get one vote each?
Mm-hmm.
Yep. This is only one position right now.
Okay. Sue Tucker?
I'm going to go yea.
Yea.
So Scott and Phil are yea.
Charles Freiberger?
Yea.
Yea.
Steve and Dave are yea.
Colas Adams?
Yea.
Nick is yea.
So it's down to Susan Tucker and Charles Freiberger?
Yes.
Yep.
Okay. Everybody gets one vote?
Yeah.
Sue Tucker?
Yea.
Yea.
Nick and Scott are yea.
I'm yea.
And Phil.
That's all, though. All right.
Chuck? How many, how many votes was that?
Three.
Three.
So that's all, though.
So the two full members are Susan Tucker and Richard Meaney.
And now we've got three for three. Now you need motions.
Motion to appoint Evelyn Miller to an alternate position for Conservation.
I'll second it.
Any discussion? How many alternates do we have? Three?
Three.
Three.
Okay.
And we, yeah, three vacancies, three names.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstaining? Okay.
Is that five, zero, zero?
Apparently.
Yeah.
Motion to appoint Charles Freiberger to an alternate Conservation Commission position.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
It's unanimous?
Motion to appoint Colas Adams to an alternate Conservation Commission position.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
All opposed? Abstaining?
Yeah.
Okay, it's...
Scott's abstaining. Four, zero, one?
Yep, four, zero, one. Okay.
Committee reports, right?
Yeah, committee reports. Stark District Commission, Commission did meet last week, and the result of meeting came forward tonight, going through the, what we voted on for the recommendation for the...
RFP?
Yeah, the RFP on that. Solid Waste?
Solid Waste did meet. We had discussion on two proposals that the board asked them to review, but no decisions. We're still in a information gathering mode.
What were those discussions on?
Two potent, uh, one was a vehicle reclamation fee where you have a potential small fee, say, three dollars on vehicle registrations, which would cover the disposal of batteries, oil, tires, for free, versus the current process where we have tires are a fee at the transfer station. The other one was some variation on pay-as-you-throw cost to solid waste disposal, whether it's, uh, we, we did not discuss bag issues at all, but it was, uh, disposal by the, either volume or weight of solid waste, perhaps like on the concept of no cost for a, a small bin, and then increasing cost for larger bins or multiple bins. So that, we're in a, and there was a variation on that of, of disposal by weight. However, it turned out that we, we thought that the arm that picks up a bin, perhaps the technology of weight allows us to weigh that bin as it's being picked up, and the technology does not exist. So that option was taken off the table. But those are the, the two agenda items we reviewed. We also reviewed tonnage being disposed of over the last three years, and the trend has continued where the straight-line average trend has continued where recyclables is still increasing, solid waste is decreasing tons per month. And it's in a basic ratio of about one-third, two-thirds. Two-thirds of the weight is solid waste, one-third is recyclables. We're, a, a goal for those recyclables considerably higher, order of, what is it? Fifty percent, I think.
As a goal?
Yes. State, a suggestion, yes. So there's room for improvement for what we, the typical resident disposes of in solid waste. Those are the three items we discussed.
That's it. Any questions, I think?
Just a couple of quick questions, because, you know, before we, you know, why don't we talk about, you know, pay-to-throw kind of thing? When they, when you talk about pay-to-throw, are they looking to, to get a projected revenue out of that? I mean, are they looking for increased revenue? I mean, why is...
It's, it's...
I'm just trying to figure out that.
Let me answer then. It's a measurable service that is provided to the residents, just like your electric bill, natural gas, sewer charge, water charge. It's all measurable. And solid waste could be measurable by household and by volume of, in this case, by volume of waste. If you, with another variation, you could have a, a chip on your barrel, so we know whether that barrel was picked up once a week, or once every two weeks, or once every three weeks, and you would potentially, under that variation, you could pay for how many times the barrel was picked up, whether it's a small barrel or a medium barrel. So there's a lot of variations on how fees could be assessed, but it's paying, if you require a lot of disposal, then you pay for that disposal. If you have a real minimum amount of disposal, you, perhaps you have no cost or a real minimum cost.
I guess where I'm going here, I mean, I don't know how much time, eventually something like that would come to the board. Do we want to continue these conversations on pay-to-throw? Because I know where I stand on, on pay-to-throw, and I don't know if other members are, before people spend a lot of time. That's why I was asking that revenue piece. I mean, I wouldn't bother me to take a vote. I could take a vote on this right now, but I don't want to bring it to the floor unless the rest...
How can you take a vote on something if you don't even have a...
There's no proposal. To take a vote, don't, don't spend any more time with this, I know where I'm going.
Right, but how do you, but...
Let me rephrase that, give direction, how's that?
Yeah, but...
What, what your direction is now is that solid waste and would continue to be fully paid for through property taxes.
Correct.
Scott?
And, you know, when this issue was first brought up five years ago, it was, it was a very politic, it was a hot potato, it was a political hot potato. And I will say, though, that since those five years, there's a lot of communities, I think most recently Merrimack, who has...
Oh.
What? I'm just saying, there are a lot of other communities that said, you know what, we're going in this direction. So I would have shut the door hard on this thing, you know, four years ago, but I think now, I think it's incumbent upon me to listen to what these proposals are. And, and I think, you know, one thing that, that Selectman Pierce, he just rattled off two to three different variations of how it could possibly be measured. And for as many people out there who want to see it part of their property taxes, there may be a whole segment of people out there that say, you know what, I recycle, you know, a lot. And I think at the end of the day, I'd rather, I think it'll be less costly for me than, than this. So, and, and the other thing that was never touched upon was that when you do institute this type of situation, in some cases, your, your recycling rates go up because people, they're paying more to get rid of garbage, so now they're more attentive to separating their recyclables and, and doing the right thing. So, as opposed to just throwing everything in the trash.
Steve?
I understand there's different ways of doing it, I appreciate that effort. I'm just talking about the philosophy of pay-to-throw, because part of that would be, is this going to be a situation where it's a revenue piece? Where what if more revenue, let's say, there's going to be so much allocated to having, having it picked up? And what if those, what if that, what if the revenue that comes in is more than the cost of picking up? How do you work that out after? And the other pieces...
You put it towards the garbage truck.
Okay, and the other piece with that is that, are we saying, I guess I could almost look at it as school. If I have one student, I pay the same tax if I have two students. In other words, we're penalizing families here at this point in time. So I guess that, you know, and we don't do that with school, we don't do that with fire department or police department. If you, in other words, if you're, or if you're, or there are some areas that use more ambulance service, et cetera.
You're in favor of pay-to-play for sports, so why would that be different?
Let me, let me finish. Now, because those services are the ones that are going to be needed for everyone. Trash is going to be needed for everyone, fire department, police department, et cetera, in school. Okay? So part of that process is being, those are needed for everyone. And I'm just saying, are we going to start saying, hey, by the way, if you, if you're a family, we want you to pay more? And, but yet, on the other hand, that family might say, well, I don't use some of these other services. So I'm just trying to figure out where, as a board, where we're going, I kind of know where I'm at with it, and I'm just figuring we put it out there now. Maybe we don't want to get into a big conversation, I thought may, it might be a little simpler, maybe we table it. But how far do you go before we decide what we want to do with this?
Yeah, I understand. I know Nick wants to make a comment, but I, I have one question from what you, what you were saying. I mean, I find it interesting comparing trash removal and pickup compared to education system. I find that interesting. And you made the comment is that that trash pickup is something that everybody uses, so it should be in the taxes, the tax rate, is that what you said?
That is correct.
Accurate. Okay, but let me just, let me just take that a little further. Everybody dies, and everybody needs to be interred or cremated. Why do we charge individuals for that? Why don't we just put that all on a tax rate?
Because I don't know where you're going to be bearing, what type of service you're going to want, Phil.
No, 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 I got to go in the ground, I got to buy the interment. We, we sell the plot, the right to inter at the cemetery, why do we charge them? Why don't we just put that in the tax rate? That way, nobody has to worry about it, anybody that dies in Goffstown, the taxpayer picks it up because we all have to die.
Well, all I'm going to say, but first of all, I, I'm, all I'm going to say with pay-to-throw is that everyone in town has garbage. We've always paid taxes to have it picked up. We've always said, hey, that's why, you know, if you want to go to Bedford for the lower taxes, well, look, you get your trash picked up. Now we want to tackle it. Okay?
Not in Bedford.
No, Bedford, you pay, I was saying, that's what we always say, is the difference is, why are we paying a little more in Goffstown? But, well, do you have trash? That's usually the first word that comes out, we have trash pickup. Now we're going to use it as a pay-to-throw and make it a revenue generator. I, I'm sorry, it's a, it's a tax that the people already pay. If you want to change it into a revenue generator or fee, that's, that is the basic concept right here. And if you want to do that, you can say that, I'm just saying I'm not there.
I kind of take a middle ground, I, I am not for pay-to-throw. However... There's some differences. We, we pay our property taxes, and included in that property tax is solid waste disposal. But this town voted to make recycling mandatory. And we know from experience that our recycling rates are only in the thirty percent. So the people who voted to make it mandatory are not following the mandatory recycling. So I am against pay-to-throw, but I'm not against reducing the size of our solid waste container to encourage the recycling because I know it can be done. You can easily cut that recycle, that solid waste container in half, and that's free. That, that pickup remains in our property taxes.
If you want a bigger one, you pay.
But if you choose not to recycle, and you require a larger solid waste container, I don't have a problem with charging an additional fee for that larger receptacle to allow an individual...
That's some of the discussions that, I mean, I know, because I've talked to Kathy Samard, who's done a lot of legwork on it, those are some of the discussions that they're having. I don't want to be... I don't want to come up and say, you know what, I'm, I'm against pay for as-you-throw or for it, without hearing all, all that. Because there are some good points that may be common ground.
On that, because I, I follow Selectman Fornier's premise in that I'm against adding anything onto car registration. I consider that another tax. So if this board feels that way, and I agree with you, why have them go through all of those motions and develop all of the policies if it's just going to come to this board, and we're going to say, no, we don't want to do that? So if the board has a will not to do any of those particular things, I think it's incumbent upon us to say, we're not interested, and stop the further...
And let's...
Steve?
I want to go one step further with what Nick's, I, I agree with what you're saying, Nick, is that, and, and what it is, it's not the size...
Why are we discussing this?
Because...
The very reason I just mentioned.
Could this be an agenda item?
We kind of run it down the road if you want to, but I agree with Nick, but it's an enforcement piece, it's not the size of my container. In other words, if I'm using my container properly, and I'm recycling all that can be, then my trash is my trash, is my trash. And that's really going to be based upon a lot, upon size of the families. You know, if, in other words, I could be a, a single, single-person household and not recycling at all, and still be going in one of those containers, which doesn't, which defeats the purpose. It's an enforcement issue of how it's supposed to be done. It's not, it's not an issue of trying to generate taxes and put a new fee out there, it's just getting recycling where it's supposed to be at.
Scott?
I love this. This is great.
Jay, you...
Great debate. Because I, I'm just trying to understand some, some logic here. Yes, there, there is a large component of people who rejected pay-as-you-throw a while ago because, hey, I'm paying my property tax, and I believe that should be included. You know, I, I think we should be open-minded to at least on this particular one, to hear the proposals. On this other issue of, should we include a three-dollar motor vehicle registration fee? And then, if that's the case, then when you dispose of batteries and tires and all the other stuff, you don't pay a fee when you come to the transfer station. That's the other issue that we have before us. So it goes, kind of goes back to what you were saying, as I could say, well, that, that would be a... If, if you went that route, it, it would be similar to what we have right now. Regardless of what you throw out, right, it's covered because it's part of, I pay property tax for that. As opposed to the way it is now where you pay as you incur it. And to your point that you made about, you not following me, like, right now...
I bring a battery to the transfer station, I pay for it.
Right.
If I don't bring a battery to the station, I don't pay for it.
That's kind of like, that's kind of like pay-as-you-throw. Pay as you dispose.
Right, but if you tack it onto my car registration, I'm paying it regardless of whether I throw one out or not.
No, because, no, because that's what you have right now for your garbage. What you have for your garbage is unlimited garbage.
Yeah, there are, there's, there's two different...
Those are two different issues. One is to dispose, one is attack, a fee on my auto registration to, so that it's free if I get rid of tires or batteries or...
Correct.
So if I don't bring those things to the transfer station currently, I'm paying for something that other people are using.
And I can make the argument that people who may advocate for pay-as-you-throw, I'm tired of paying in property, higher property taxes because I do my due diligence, and I recycle, you know, on a ratio of four to one on my garbage. And, and people who are not following the protocol, they're costing me money, so I want to only pay my fair share. But that's neither here nor there. And, and with regard to size of families, and, hey, we got people in this town who have, you know, four people in their household, and they've got four cars. We've got people with eight people in their household with two cars, and guess what, they pay motor vehicle registrations regardless of how big or small, you know, the, you know, the family is. We've got people paying property taxes, by the way, who are in condominiums, timber wood, and all those other ones where they're not getting garbage or recycling pickup, or garbage pickup, but yet they're paying property taxes. So there are some people out there, if I lived in one of those places, I'd be like, bring on pay-as-you-throw because I, I'm, I'm already paying property taxes, I don't get those services.
So you really believe that this will change what I pay in my tax? You don't think it's, you don't think it's going to cost me more in the end, is what I'm asking.
There's an underlying... It changes your behavior, does it not?
You really believe this is going to cost me less in the end?
Well, just...
That's the underlying premise, whether you believe it or not.
What I was going to, what I was going to suggest is that we could sit here all night long until the cows come home, which I don't feel like doing. But let the, let the committee do some of its work, let it see what it comes up with, and let's see if they can sell the pitch to the board of Selectmen, that's all.
Right, I don't see a clear consensus.
No, I don't see it either right now either.
Well, the only, only thing I can tell you is...
We wait till March, March two.
No, no, I mean, it's not clear, that's...
It'll be three-two. That's what makes this, this, this board interesting.
If you want to call it interesting.
So unpredictable.
I just thought, I didn't, I thought it was going to be a little...
That's enough of, that, that's, that's enough of, of committee reports. The planning board did meet...
What about the disposal of fireworks now, Stevie, you'll be in, doing that, or?
Yes, I'll do that.
For disposal of fireworks?
No.
Yeah, okay. Well, it's, it's going to be in the fee that's charged for it.
Only if it's unused, they'll dispose it.
Well, yeah, but if it's out on the barge, then it's... Planning board did meet, and Saint Ace came in with a present, with a request for, they want to move their parking lot for the Dana Center and...
Davison.
Davison Hall. The current parking lot, they want to make it to a park, they want to remove the asphalt and put grass, and they have a plan for, for park and pedestrian friendly for the students. And they're moving, the plan is that they're moving the parking lot into another location, which is physically in Bedford, and they're currently in front of the Bedford Planning Board right now for that. So the board determined that it did have a regional impact because of that, and... Their next, they, they need a drainage study, pending a drainage study for the next time they come back. So that's where that is. So any questions to say of that? Then with, then we'll committee reports unless the two-fiftieth has a report.
No, no, no reports.
No report from the two-fiftieth?
Nope.
Thank God.
Wonderful, Gail.
Strike, yeah.
Yes, it was. I have to say, you, you did a good job, you and Elizabeth did an excellent job.
Excellent job.
On putting it all together, and I've got, I got many, many compliments Saturday night regarding, especially the... The...
Hypnotist.
Hypnotist.
Yeah.
No, the hypnotist with that was, was excellent, but otherwise, that, that was good. So ending committee reports.
Goffstown.
Two-fifty.
We need, we need to, we need to approve the red line changes on the rules of procedure that we followed tonight, or we tried to follow. Whether or not we did or not, I don't know, but we did something.
Yes.
So...
And I had one, well, I had one comment on the, Sue, you had sent us... You said section two-point-seven-point-three, you had made a change.
Yes, that one was not discussed at your meeting, because basically...
But I'm not quite sure if...
If there is, if there are an equal number of yays and nays cast, the motion, the way it currently reads, neither passes nor fails.
Oh, I thought you added that.
No, no.
You deleted that.
I deleted neither passes nor.
Thank you.
Because really, it fails, and that's how we've been operating.
Yeah, because it didn't make sense with that, because...
No, it didn't.
And it says it's reintroduced by a member of the prevailing side.
And who's that?
And there wouldn't be one.
Exactly.
Thank you. Motion to accept the changes to the board of Selectmen's policies and procedures.